Oh, how exciting. We're live streaming. Oh, how exciting. We're live streaming. Mark, you want to test your microphone?
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
Perfect.
Good.
Chief Sorenson, can we test your audio, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Andre, do you want to test your audio as well? Andre, can you hear us? This is my coffee cup for this morning. Big coffee cup. Good morning, Anna. Do you want to test your sound?
Yes. Hi, good morning.
Good morning. Perfect.
Great. Thank you.
Good morning, April. Do you want to test your audio?
Yep. Can you hear me okay?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Cindy, I'll just keep an eye on you for when we, when we're ready to go. Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Hi, Chris. Do you want to check your audio?
Sure. Good morning.
Morning. Perfect. How are you, Andre?
I'm doing well, thank you. How's everybody else doing?
Good. Thank you. Okay, I'm seeing Paul on and let's see. We have Anna, we have Lester and let's see.
Lester, can we check your audio?
Sure. What do you want to know?
Perfect. You sound perfect.
Excellent.
Are you going to come on the screen?
I will.
And it looks like we have Eric as well, so I think we're all here.
Eric, can you check your audio?
Can you hear me, Cindy?
I, perfect. And I'll just check Paul.
I'm here. Good morning.
Perfect. Perfect. Okay, we're all here. I think we can get started, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Good morning, everybody. Welcome. This is the City of St. Helena Special City Council Meeting, our first of our goal-setting meetings this Thursday, March 4th, 2021. And I'm going to have Cindy help the community understand our remote access for public comment and also our Spanish language interpretation.
I will share my screen. Well, I Priya, it's not I'm not getting the option to share my screen. Priya?
You should be able to. The, you are the host of the meeting. The
Yeah. There we go. We got it.
Yeah.
Okay, participate in public comment by phone. You would dial 669-900-6833. And at the prompt, you had to enter the meeting ID, which is 845-7281-8852. You'd press pound. And then during the public comment, you would press star nine to speak. And so this morning's meeting is going to be, we'll have live Spanish interpretation. To access the interpretation, you will need to use the Zoom application from either your cell phone, tablet or computer. Instructions on how to use the Zoom app are listed in English and Spanish on the city's website. Once you join the meeting from the Zoom application, you will see a small globe at the bottom of the or top of the screen. Click on the globe and you'll be able to access the live interpretation. Marcia and Claudia are the interpreters this morning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we will move to our pledge of allegiance. I've asked Chief Sorenson to lead us in this pledge this morning.
All right, Mr. Mayor, you can see the flag all right there. You all remove your hats and place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we could have our roll call, please?
Mayor Eldred?
Here.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Here.
Councilor Chico?
Here.
Paul?
Here.
And Hardy?
Here.
Thank you. And at this point, I want to just check if there are any updates to the agenda that we need to know about since, since publishing. We're looking good. Okay. The other thing, this is going to be a fairly long meeting, so we'll look for a break period as we get into sort of the middle area of the meeting and we'll just keep our eyes at where the best time for that will be. So just so folks know. So in terms of public comment, because this is a special meeting, under California law, public comments at special meetings are limited to subjects on the agenda only. Therefore, public comment will take place during consideration of the item. Each person shall be limited, comment shall be limited to four minutes. So we'll open public comment as we get into the meeting. So folks will have an opportunity to, to give input. So
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, when you say it's a long meeting, do we have a target date for closure? And, and the meeting?
My understanding was noon, but I could be incorrect. Mr. Presswich?
I would just like us all to focus on it, on an end time because I have some other things to do today. So 12 o'clock is fine with me.
Yeah, having that context is good.
We're not anticipating moving beyond 12 o'clock and we very well may, or may finish early.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, with that, we're going to move into our, our special meeting here. This is the introduction to goal-setting and strategic work plan workshop. And so we've got our, our information that was sent out last, yesterday in terms of a overview. And I'm going to pass this to Mr. Presswich to take us into the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, everyone. I want to share some introductory comments, review our agenda today, and then we'll jump right into it. First, I want to thank the mayor and the vice mayor who helped myself and Priya Nixon, our assistant to the city manager, develop today's agenda. In, in 2021 and carrying over from 2020, that requires a little innovation because we're now in a Zoom environment. So we're approaching the goal-setting a little bit differently this year. But I think you'll find that the work that we've already put in behind the scenes with the council's help will hopefully accelerate some of the work that we have in front of us today. I also want to acknowledge our executive team who is here today to, as a resource for you. They will be available for questions that you have, clarifications on work plan issues. So I want to thank them as well. This is, I'm thinking about this, we're, we're thinking about this as a, really a two-step process, perhaps three steps. So today is a first look at and discussion of potential 2021, 2022. So think fiscal year 2021, 2022, work plan initiatives and goals. And we, the goals are the overarching direction. And the initiatives that fall under each goal are intended to be 12-month objectives that are measurable, attainable, and can be delivered within existing staff resources and financial resources. We anticipate receiving a lot, having a very good conversation today, discussion about these goals, the specific tasks that carry over from the prior year, some new, some new items that have arrived on our work plan, and then a conversation about additional items that might be considered as well. And we don't have to wordsmith all of this today. That's the purpose of a two-step process where we will receive feedback today and then come back to you on March 25th. That's our second workshop that we have planned in the morning and work through, and we're, work through a refined product that's prepared as a result of the conversations today. So with our agenda today, we're going to start off with some discussion about prior year accomplishments. There were, there was a lot of activity and it was a very unusual year. But we want to acknowledge, take the time to acknowledge the work that was done, celebrate that work, and then jump right into looking forward. We will have a brief conversation about the vision and mission statements. We will receive a presentation from our finance director on our economic forecast through the end of the current fiscal year, and then a very early projection of how we're looking for the following fiscal year. And it does look constrained. So I do want to set that expectation there. We are still experiencing fairly significant revenue shortfalls that are going to cause, have some impact on our ability to fund various initiatives. We're going to spend a lot of time, the meat and potatoes of this focus is the discussion of our work plan. And then we'll close with a discussion of a community budget survey. So unless there are any questions, I'll jump right in. And we would then, we would then move to item 5.2, the celebration of prior year organizational accomplishments. And Priya Nixon? Go ahead.
I just got a message that, on the public link, I just wanted to double-check that everything is, somebody had said that they had clicked on it, was having trouble getting on. I apologize for the interruption.
Sure.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I got the same message. And the agenda has been republished. And I've reached out to folks that have messaged me.
Okay, so
We do have Jesse as an attendant.
Okay, so we'll just, Mark, I'm sorry, I gotten that and that sort of distracted me from where you were. If you could just kind of give us a take it back a little bit.
Sure. So we're going to move now to item 5.2, unless there are any questions about the overview that I presented. As we work through today's work plan discussion, Priya Nixon will be assisting me and we'll be doing some live note-taking on the screen. We'll be sharing the screen quite a bit. You'll get used to looking at a fairly complex spreadsheet that will have numerous tabs. And we're going to begin by using a Word document where we're going to take a little inventory from first the council members and then I'll invite the, the staff to add any other items they would like to, to share. But we're interested in opening up a conversation about prior year organizational accomplishments that the council remembers and is thinking about as well as our staff. So we'll begin with our council. And I would just invite you to jump in. We want to document the work that was done last year as well as the challenges. I think it's okay to share about the challenges that we had to navigate through as well. And I have, I have additional notes in case so. Because I've walked through every agenda since the early 2020.
Okay, very good, very good. If, and just if we can use the, the computer button for raise hand as much as possible, that just makes it a little, little easier for me to see who's chiming in. You know, sometimes a gesture is mistaken. So I, I saw Ms. Chito and then Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wondered what came to mind right away with the York Creek Dam. That was so major in terms of moving on from that. I feel like that's a huge accomplishment.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall?
Thank you. I was just going to comment. When I think back on the year, I think about all of the different crises, in particular, of course, was the Glass Fire. And I just wanted to call out once again, our fire department, our police department, so much of the staff who literally jumped in to save our town. So I view that as a major accomplishment. All else set aside, everybody, it was all hands on deck and everybody did a terrific job.
Thank you.
Mr. Doring or Mr. Hardy, any input at this point?
Well, I would just, rather than focus on projects, I'll focus on people. I have been extraordinarily impressed with all of the staff, all the managers who've worked through this, really a difficult year. I want to call out Maya DeRosa in particular, but all, all of the staff for an exceptional professionalism, a high level of professionalism and a low level of drama, which is really what you need when you have to go through difficulties. So I am very grateful and very thankful for all of our staff in interacting with you all. It's been a really, really fabulous experience. And because of that, I think we've made, we've been able to accomplish a lot. Much of it mundane and really not the glitzy stuff, but a lot of good work done and much to be done in the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hardy?
Thank you. I don't have a lot to add. I think that's a great list, but just in response to Vice Mayor Doring's comments, I would say to me what the city has demonstrated, staff especially, is a great resilience in addressing a year of multiple crises. And that's been an essential part of the city's success in working through the crises and much appreciated.
Thank you. And so those, those comments about regarding staff, the, the extraordinary performances of staff at all levels, just unbelievable in the face of what we were looking at, one crisis after another. The, the focus, the stability, the resiliency, just remarkable. And at the same time, accomplishing legacy projects, getting York Creek Dam pushed through. I think we had a significant achievement in getting our wastewater treatment plant out to bid. We pushed forward our agenda on racial and social equity that it was, is critical. We also kept our climate concerns in, in full view. Circling back on, on sort of emergency response, our city and our city staff and the ability to connect with our businesses and our residents to find resources to get everybody to the point we are now, where we have a stability, we're still in a COVID emergency, but we're in a, in a more stable climbing recovery. And so that, a lot of that came from the staff and our, and our council being very focused. So I want to make sure we praise the council's work too, for keeping the focus where it needed to go to make sure everybody could get through an emergency situation. And we did a fantastic job on that. So I want to make sure to, to mention that.
Thank you. At this time, let me invite some of our, our staff to offer a few other observations of 2020. And I can't see you, so you'll have to jump in.
I can jump in. I have a few things jotted down. So again, echo the sentiments of the, the council is just my staff. I'm, you know, incredibly grateful for everything that they've done and endured this past year because it has not been easy. You know, part of that too is just with all of the, the new grant funding that's becoming available for, not only for remediation, but is, you know, even trying to get funding back from the disasters that we faced. I know it's, we've, my staff has been, put in a tremendous amount of work. The painful side of it is that both myself and then my finance manager, Mandy Callog, have been working an extraordinary amount of hours. So it, you know, we're, we're having great rewards coming out of some of the grants that we've been getting and some of the grants that we've been responding to. But it's also, you know, the flip side is the pain of a lot of hours, a lot of evenings and a lot of weekends. But I'm very proud that we're getting it done. And the other thing I'm very proud of, and it reminded me again yesterday, is the financial policies that we're able to put into place over the past couple of years. This past year, we adopted some more financial policies and it's something that I'm really, really proud of, you know, for what the city has done, what the city council has done. And a good reminder yesterday is GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. So it's not just limited to California. They put out a call to cities to be able to upload some of their best practices and some of their policies. And I was very proud yesterday that we are the second California, second city in all of California that I was able to put all of our policies on, on their website to share with the nation and share with, you know, our neighbors to the north in Canada. So those are some of the things that just I'm very, very proud of over the past year.
Mark, I just want to put one comment on top of that, the financial aspect, the focus of, of the financial department and the city manager in creating a budget through the emergency that kept us as stable, you know, in a remarkably stable place throughout. I just want to, want to put that on top of that.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would also acknowledge that GFOA presented us with a distinguished budget award as well as a certificate of excellence for our CAFER last year as well. So those were nice to see. Are there other department directors that would like to share?
I wouldn't mind starting here. I, I want to give a shout out to the staff of Public Works and to American Canyon helping Beddowood Tanks be restored within, I think, two weeks of getting water back online during the fires. Also the fact that I think we got eight contracts entirely, emergency contracts, but we got two or three written within hours of the LNU and then the glass fires breaking out. And that was a coordination effort with, with April's team, with finance, the city attorney and Mark Presswich, get, going even driving us to Sacramento or Tovacaville to get the rainfall sign with, with getting the temporary tanks online. And guess what? Today, the new permanent tanks are being delivered to the Luisa Stralla plant and will be started construction next week. I mean, that's, that's a heavy lift. And that project's been on the books for years, but it took the glass fire to finally get it out to be replaced, those tanks. I also want to say, let's not downplay the downtown restrooms, despite COVID and, and having those restrooms landlocked at the Port of Oakland for a month and then a year almost waiting for PG&E to drop a meter connection. Those were completed last year. Big effort. But just thankful for the team that we have at all levels. It's, it's been impressive and, and they've been really troopers. People are tired. But it's, it's, it was a long haul. There was a, not a race, right, Mark? It was a marathon.
It may, it may have been a 100-mile race.
With hurdles.
Can I add something?
Sure.
I would sure love to acknowledge the staff members that came from other departments and have been working in the EOC environment. And just talking about the PIO group, I've got a person from the library and a person from the recreation department that has stepped in and became PIOs and it has just been fantastic. And so I just really appreciate also staff learning the Zoom environment and just learning different technology to help us through. And so I just really appreciate all the effort and work that all of us have done as a team.
You, Cindy?
Hi, this is Maya. I'll jump in.
Hi, this is Maya. I'll jump in as well. Well, as you know, I have a, a small but very, very mighty department. And, you know, I've been here almost a year and one month. And I have to do an absolute shout out to my staff. This year, you know, despite the COVID pandemic and we thought we'd see a real dip in our activity, particularly business of building permits, it was just quite the contrary. And how all of my staff rose to the occasion to, in a, kind of with one hand behind their back, to continue to deliver the same level of service, but in a very much more constrained atmosphere where people can't come in and, you know, immediately talk to a person or not everyone's there. And yet they're able to still do the same volume of, of work. It's just, I mean, I'm just really without the proper words to really show my gratification. And, and I also want to give a big shout out to Aaron for the Farmstead project and just keeping all those plates spinning. How, I mean, that is miraculous how that project just sailed through the process in the midst of a pandemic. And then, as you know, we had some of the public hearings, right, during the fires and power outages. And, you know, we, you know, we had to skip a meeting, but it just kept on going. And I've, I'm, I'm just really thrilled with the DA. It's historic for the city in terms of developer obligations, both on the housing side and the infrastructure side. So, so there's a big shout out there. And then I have a specific list of a couple of projects that I just want to also, you know, share that, you know, the, the 1229 Adams is a new building going in, right, you know, in the core of our downtown. That's really going to help activate. It's across from the Naperville Coffee Roasters. It's going to really help strengthen that, that side of the street. We've got new four-boat housing going in at 963 Pope. We got a LEAP grant for $65,000 to further help fund our housing element work. We hired a housing element consultant. We are one of the first in the county that has even jumped out of the starting gate to even begin to dissect that whole Rena process. So I'm really, again, proud of Aaron for spearheading that. And as you know, we've all had to transition to virtual meetings and the planning commission has, you know, we've had our stuff, our ups and downs with technology, but I'm very impressed with how we're able to just run those meetings on a dime and do the public comment and, and make sure business still happens. And then, of course, we got our ADU ordinance adopted to be consistent with the state law in July. And then, you know, lastly, on the planning side, the zoning ordinance update, you know, it is, you know, it's, it's had a pause because of all the disasters, but, you know, we're more than 50% done and now it's in the hands of the zoning subcommittee to review that work. So I'm really excited about that accomplishment. And then before I close, I am also responsible for the planning section of the EOC and I have met some fabulous people that are not part of my department that I would have never otherwise had the pleasure to work with. And, you know, Priya and Cecilia and Lynn Albrecht, they're just, and Amalia, I mean, I couldn't ask for a better team. And without them, I tell you, a lot of the coordination behind the scenes just, just would not have happened. So, so I'm, I'm very grateful today. Thank you.
Thank you, Maya. We've been having EOC meetings continuously since mid to late March of 2020. So we're, we're about to celebrate our first year anniversary with an active emergency. Others?
I'd like to jump in. This is Kathy Robinson for HR and GT. One of the things that's just kind of under the radar and it's not public facing was our ability to deploy all of our admin staff to work from home. They were fully equipped and we were able to procure lots prior to Dell going on backorder. And I think that was a huge accomplishment with regards to COVID and just the ability to send, allow our employees to work from home. And then we were actually able to adopt the handbook, which was, the last adoption was 2005, and that was several, several months in the making, maybe even years, but we were able to finally do that. So, and then I also want to just shout out again to all the staff members who did, were able to go to work for the EOC, specifically for me. I had Casey working in the safety unit and I would not have been able to do, deliver any of HR services, Breehan and I, without the help of Casey. So the pandemic really showed how this organization comes together and supports each other. And, I mean, if we look at blessings that happen from these pandemics, it's our ability to work together and support each other. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Kathy.
And I'd like This is Chris with the library. COVID totally upended library services and my staff, you know, bought it kind of outside the box with craft kits, creating a virtual library, expanding that, and also doing curbside service. And now getting ready to hopefully soon reopen in a totally different service model. So, and at the same time, my staff is also, as others have pointed out, have done EOC stuff. So that was outside their box. So it's been incredible to see what my staff has been pulling off for the last year. So.
Thank you, Chris. I heard Chief Hartley.
Yes, this, good morning. This is Chief Hartley. Who'd have thought my first year being chief here, that I'd go through two fires, a pandemic and the whole social justice? I mean, nothing like being, you know, broken by fire, so to speak. Speaking of which, the fires, we received a lot of recognition for the glass fire. But one thing that really sticks out to me was during the Hennessy Fire, San Alina was not impacted as bad as the rest of the county, for the most part. However, our police department, when the county called for help, we, you know, it should be noted that the San Alina Police Department was the very first agency to jump to their assistance. And we remained as part of their team for the duration of that fire. You know, we've been working because of the pandemic and being short-staffed, our guys really stepped up to the plate, not to mention that some of our own officers had their families displaced at the same time, yet they were still coming to work and, and fighting the fight. Also, the social justice conversation that has taken place across the country hit very close to home with our city and its discussions that I'm looking forward to continuing with the community. I think it has brought the community closer with the city and with the police department. And what city council doesn't see is that conversation did not just take place, you know, at one of our city council meetings. That conversation has continued and carried over into the schools and into the streets with officers who have had one-on-one conversations, you know, away from the police department and have really opened pathways for those conversations to continue in the, in the future. And I'm very proud of how they have shared my philosophy outside of these walls. One of the things that we did accomplish through all this, that I've been here 22 years and none of my predecessors were able to accomplish, is we finally have a, a up-to-date repeater where we can have communications across the county. For, you know, for years and years, there were even spots in town where police officers had no communications should they need a backup, like over behind the warehouses off, the wine warehouses off of Dow Dell, always had dead areas. If we had to do an agency assist in Calistoga or an agency assist in Pope Valley or in Napa, we would lose communications with our own dispatch. Well, we don't have that issue anymore. We can communicate anywhere within the county and in some cases outside the county. By this upgrade, we've also taken a big leap forward toward the state mandated encryption. When we upgraded our system, we also made our system capable of taking on all these mandates that have been pushed down by the state of California and the federal government. We're way, it was supposed to go into effect on one January of this year. We've all received waivers. There is no agency in the state that can meet that mandate. But we're, within our county, we are far ahead of everybody else. Napa PD and Napa County Sheriff's Department are looking at putting in hundreds of thousands of dollars into being able to meet the state, the state mandates. We did ours gradually and we're at a point where our cost is going to be minimal, to say the least. We had our, even though we were in the pandemic and everything else, our post-compliance inspections for the state of California, which is peace officer standards and training, we passed all of those with flying colors. All of our people are on top of their training, which is difficult for a lot of agencies in this state, just based on the pandemic alone. Some of the, a lot of the trainings were canceled. Had to do the transition from in-house training to Zoom training. So for us to be able to meet those state mandates and pass the compliance checks or compliance inspection with flying colors is another great job done by our agency. And the last thing I want to touch on is our school resource officer. An unforeseen change is our school resource officer had left at the beginning of the school year, which less, left us with an unfilled grant position. Well, we put up, opened it up for people to apply for that position. Officer Melissa Brown ended up earning that position and she has built a relationship far exceeded what my expectations were. And she's extremely loved by the school and the students and has really taken this program further than it probably would have gone, even with the unforeseen change in the middle of the program. So I just, one last thing I wanted to note on during these times of crisis, the EOC played a huge part in our success. And most police agencies have their own PIO. It was a little straight, that was a little strange for me, not having that within the agency. But Cindy and her team really stepped up during these difficult times, which made my job so much easier. So a big shout out to, to the girls that picked up on the PIO. And I'd be amiss to leave Stephanie Yakabachi out of that conversation because she went above and beyond what any PIO would normally do. I'm proud to work with this team. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. And I was looking back, your, your first, you were formally sworn in on January 14th, 2020. So congratulations for your first year anniversary. Are there other comments?
Yes, I'd like to go. This, this is Andre, Parks and Recreation. You know, we haven't been able to do the things that we normally do in Parks and Recreation, but that hasn't stopped my team. We've had a couple of opportunities to provide some, some fun opportunities for the
Andre, you froze?
With things like the, if their houses submit. Yeah.
Connection. Can you take your video off and just, and do, just do the audible? Maybe that'll help.
Okay, I hope that does.
Great, we can hear you.
All right. So just that we haven't been able to do the type of things in Parks and Recreation that we would normally do. My team has gone to, to every part of, of addressing emergencies and helping out with, not only has Amalia been working in the planning section, but she's helped out with various meetings, whether it be ATSC or, or any, you know, planning commission. I'm guessing she's been doing some of that. I know she's been involved in, in City Hall with, helping out with, with Zoom and that's, that's meant a lot of hours for her. She's become a Zoom wizard and appreciate her knowledge about that. Whenever I have a question about Zoom, she's been able to answer that. And oftentimes, that usually means telling me I'm doing it wrong and telling me how to do it right. Also, just, I don't want to forget the fact that she did obtain her certification. So he's, he's now a certified park and recreation professional, just as Stephanie and myself are. So I'm very proud of the fact that we have a team that's all achieved certification. Chris said it's been, has been amazing. She has been on top of the guidelines put out by the county. So whenever I have a question, I, I ask her, she tells me exactly where we're at, what we can do. And that's really important for Parks and Recreation because we want to be very careful about what we're offering and following those guidelines closely. So, and, and she's got programs that are coming up that she wants to get going, that the, the rest of the department wants to see happening. So she needs to know what's happening with those, with those guidelines. And then we shouldn't forget the fact that she worked with the, with the chamber to make sure that the Hunt Avenue Hub happened. And I think that was very successful. She put in a lot of work to make that happen. And I'm just proud of that work. The last thing I'll say is that even while we had some tough restrictions with COVID regards to what we could do programming wise, there were some things that we could take outside. So Amalia was able to keep some of our, our martial arts classes going outside. There were times where we had to dial it back for a little bit, but for the most part, people are still able to enjoy that. And we have a lot of demand for getting back into, into martial arts classes.
We may have lost
Andre, you've frozen. So I'm going to, is there anyone else? And briefly, please, as we
We can get requests about youth sports, about
Andre, you're cutting in and out. Can you hear, can you hear us? I think we're going to have to, to move over here.
I can. My team is great. They've done a great job.
Thank you.
All right. If there's anyone else, let's try to be as succinct as possible. Have a big agenda ahead of us today. Are there other comments?
Yep, John Sorensen, our chief. So just wanted to say, just what a fantastic job the fire department did. The fire department that you have is a combination department. You have two full times and myself, and then the rest are all paid per call. So they're all in the community. They're, they own, you know, vineyard management. They have insurance companies all in town and they come down in a moment's notice and, and do just a fantastic job for a budget of this size. It's just incredible. On the lightning and the Hennessy Fires, on top of that, we had COVID and how we all did it, it was, it was truly amazing. No, nobody was injured. We did have a few minor burns. One firefighter fell in the septic tank up to his knees, was about it for the glass fire, which was amazing. We got through that. I want to thank Mark Presswich for letting me go to other fires to get qualified as a division supervisor. Without that training I had throughout the year, I don't think I could have done the job I did without that training, on the job training. And subsequently, when the, when we send the engines out to help other communities, they pay us back by coming to help us. And that's what happened. And I believe there was 23 other fires and yet some of them were just exhausted and they showed up anyway. We were reimbursed $374,000 for sending out our overhead, which is me and the engines, which went into our for sending out our overhead, which is me and the engines, which went into our engine replacement fund. We have a $1.4 million ladder truck in the future, near future, that needs to be replaced. And that is how it helps out. So it was just incredible year. And as Chris Hartley was talking about Stephanie Yakabachi, I totally forgot. She is an incredible employee that you have. I remember I got a call from the plant section chief at the glass fire and they said, John, can you get up to Spring Mountain and do a quick damage assessment? And I didn't have anybody to go because I wanted to drive and be able to put down all the addresses of the losses. And Stephanie was in the lobby at the firehouse and she said, I'll go with you. And she did. And trees were falling left and right and we did all Spring Mountain Road and I was going to try to do, I was going to try to do Lang Tree. And a tree fell right in front of us while she had her head down writing on the paper and she didn't know about it. And I said, well, you know what, maybe we'll do that later. And I brought her back to town. But she really did a fantastic job. And everybody, Assistant Chief Waters, who runs the night calls and makes sure that the engine gets out at night and the five captains, everybody's, I can't say more.
Thank you, John. Incredible work this year, no question. I don't know if there's anyone else, but I have a few just final comments. We began 2020 in the middle of a relocation of City Hall. We were still transitioning and frankly completing repairs on HVAC systems and our staff was still transitioning into 1572 Railroad in March. We completed a PSPS after action report, which led to some good recommendations. We spent a lot of time in this financing infrastructure task force, lived the Zoom environment transition from meetings in person to concluding their work via Zoom and produced some terrific recommendations for the city council to consider. I want to acknowledge that we completed placing the emergency fuel tank in the corporation yard. That was an action item coming out of our 2017 fires and the after-action report that, that occurred then. The city council approved a small business sustainability loan program for $300,000 in June, which was taken advantage of by our, our business community. You also approved emergency temporary use permit processes. And that's helped facilitate an over-the-counter process that the planning department's been very successful at working with. I want to acknowledge our employees who, to help balance the budget, received voluntarily agreed to reductions in compensation, which also meant fewer hours for us this year. But I know that a lot of overtime was worked in support of those emergencies. So I want to acknowledge and thank our employees. We also completed the library roof flat portion. That was about a $200,000 project. And we've tested it with the rain. It's, it's holding. So that's great. We secured grants for generators. We resurfaced the tennis courts. And the council also approved a voluntary retirement incentive program that helped, helped the city balance its budget in the current year. So terrific work across the board. And I, I really want to say thank you to our employees and acknowledge all of their work and sacrifice over the last 12 months. It's appreciated and you can tell that we have a tremendous team from top to bottom. And we're so grateful for the work that they put in the last year. It's been exhausting. And I think it's fair to say we're all very tired coming out of 2020. But today we're going to take a step looking forward and I do think that there's some positive things to, to look forward to in the near future. Any other comments on this item?
Oh, I, Mark, I just want to put one more comment. That an opportunity came up, a silver lining through these disasters was the communication that increased with companies like AT&amp;T, PG&E, organizations like the county. Our lines of communication became much clearer as we navigated these disasters. And these are things, you know, we can maintain, but I just want to make sure that that's put in there. Communication's really improved sort of regionally.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. We will now move to item 5.3 on the agenda. And Priya is going to share her screen. And what we're going to put up here is the city's vision and mission statements. So the vision statement and the mission statement were developed in 2016. And they've been helpful in guiding the work of the city and the focus of the city, influencing the work plan and the budget over the last five years. But it has been five years and we've, we know we have a number of new initiatives. And, and a set of goals that has evolved over time. And it may be helpful if the council sees value in this of identifying a council member or two to potentially take a careful look at this after thinking through the conversation that we have through today. Talking about goals and objectives and thinking through the initiatives coming forward. Whether there's an opportunity to, to consider some additional edits to this document. So I raise it as a question. And if there's council interest in taking a, a look at that, the, the thinking here is that a member or two of the council, if two, they could work together over the next three weeks at taking a look at this document and bringing forward some potential edits for the full council to consider. So we're not planning to wordsmith this, this today. Just simply raise that as a, as a question for the council.
This was an item that the vice mayor brought up that looking at it, relooking at it, it may be timely to do that. And as you said, Mark, not to do it here today, but to identify a few council members who may want to work on that. And I would ask Vice Mayor Doring if he would, would be on that committee to lead that forward and then see if there's another council member who may want to join him.
Yes, I would be happy to do that.
I'm happy to join you, Paul.
Okay, so are we, everybody okay with that in terms of the council? Is there, I'm seeing Mr. Hardy's hand up?
Oh, yes, thank you. I was just going to say that I was planning to submit an edit for considerations. Happy to submit that to the committee.
I think, I think that sounds like a good process. If, if any of the council members have some thoughts on this to submit to the committee and if everybody's comfortable with the vice mayor and Mr. Hall being that committee and has, in support of that, we can move forward on this item. Looks like we've got consensus. So very good. We appreciate the stepping up for that. And we'll, we'll hear more about that as we get towards the next meetings. And so then we'll move now then to the item 5.4. That's the financial update and preliminary fiscal year 2021, 22 budget information. And that's back to Mr. Presswich.
Thank you, Mayor. When we work on developing a work plan, we want to develop a work plan that aligns the available resources with the initiatives and staff capacity. And I alluded to the idea that as we've looked carefully at trying to forecast with the information that we have today, and it's a little early, when we look to 2021, 22, we do see a fairly constrained revenue environment still. It's better. And we'll talk a little bit about this today. But I think it, we've taken the time to take a careful look at, looking at revenues as well as planned expenditures, anticipated expenditures. And our finance director, April Mitz, will walk us through a short presentation.
Great, thank you very much. In a few seconds, I'll have a screen share where you can see the PowerPoint. Okay. So again, this is the financial update. So the preliminary numbers for 21, 22 and just some ongoing budget information. So we'll start out, we're just going to be covering the general fund today. And we have three different segments. We have our past, which is what happened last year. Our present, which is where we currently are, and then our future. So what we're looking forward to in 21, 22. So next slide. So for our past, so last fiscal year budget. You'll see what our adopted was. This is a pre-COVID environment. We had $15 million for our actual revenues or for our adopted revenues. Our actual came in at 14.2. So you will see that, that our variance in each of the categories for our property tax, our sales tax and our transient occupancy and then our other category, and we did have a variance of $755,000. So it was definitely lower than what we anticipated and that was due to the COVID shutdown and the shelter at home orders in March. And then you'll see on the expense side, we had our adopted budget of 15 million, which matched our revenue. Our actual budget, which ended up being 14.2 million. And then we had our rollover purchase orders, which were expenses that we planned on utilizing in fiscal year 20. But we, but we, and we signed contracts and we rolled it over to the next fiscal year. So we had the overall variance of $399,000. The next slide. So where we ended at June 30th, 2020, we had overall fund balance of $7.1 million, which is a 49% reserve level, which is a very, very healthy reserve level. So that put us in a really good position as we started this current fiscal year. Next slide. So where we are in our current budget, in the formation of our current budget, it's just a reminder of where, how we adopted our current year budget that we're in. We did do overall budget reductions of 2.3 million. One of the, the other part of the strategy in developing the budget was use of our reserves of 1.74 million. So this is where that healthy reserve level is very, very important. Labor strategies of 1.45 million. So that was the overall concessions by all of our current employees as well as freezing several vacant positions. The freezing of the positions did equate to about $500,000 of this overall labor strategy. And then new revenues, that was about $290,000. Just knowing that it is such, and I don't want to use unstable environment, but just such a fluid environment. We just did not know where the revenues were going to end up. And so we had this new revenue in there, knowing that the revenues can fluctuate. And so that left an overall budget strategy of $5.8 million, which was our projected shortfall. So the next slide. So here's where we're at currently. A couple of weeks ago, we had our mid-year budget review. So we did have some mid-year adjustments to our revenues and our expenses. So 3.2, almost 3.3 million in revenue. And then the expenses of 3.4 million. And the primary basis for those dollar amounts was for the emergencies that we faced. So everything from the LNU and glass fires as well as COVID-related adjustments. So here's what we're anticipating our net position is going to be for the end of this current fiscal year that we're in. So we're looking now where we started out as our ending fund balance for last fiscal year of $7.1 million. So now our estimated unassigned net position is 4.4 million, which is a 26% reserve level. So this is where I'm very, very grateful that we have been very fiscally conservative in our previous fiscal years. Where we did have that healthy reserve level and so our net position is 26%. Our council-directed policy is that our net position is set at 30% for our general fund level. So while we are slightly below that 30%, 26% is very, very healthy. And I'm very happy that we have that because in our preliminary forecast for next year, it is something that we are probably going to have to be dipping into reserves. Just contrasting on a side note, when I first started with the city back in 2014, our reserve level was in the single digits. We were about 7% back then. So it is a big accomplishment that the city has done over the past couple of years to be able to get to this, knowing that at 26% in the middle of a pandemic and financial crisis. This is a good place for us to be. So I'm very happy to be able to report on that. The next slide. So again, just to recap for June 30th, 2021, ending fund balance of 4.4 million, which 26% reserve. Next slide. So here's the future where we're looking at for the 2022 revenues. Oh, I'm I'm sorry, I messed up on one of my slides here. Oh, no, sorry. This is the future. So here's our revenue. So right now, our fiscal year 2021 adopted budget. And again, I'm going off of the adopted budget because if I were to go off the adjusted budget, it would be highly skewed because of the emergency relief that we're expecting as well as some of the one-time revenues that we don't, we don't budget, which primarily is the ERAF funds. So here's our adopted budget of 11.1 million, almost 11.2 million. Our preliminary fiscal year 2022 revenues is we are looking at $13.2 million. So that is a, definitely it's a, it's a change of $2 million, which is positive. Sales tax, we're from preliminary looking at having a 54% increase. TOT is a 90% increase. Property tax is a 4% increase. And then other, you'll actually see a decrease of 34%. And the reason why we see that decrease is during the fiscal year 21 budget adoption, what we did is we took some revenue or some, some funds that were, that were transferred out to primarily Civic CIP. It was for the library roof repair because we allocated $500,000 to go towards a full roof repair. We ended up only doing a partial roof repair. So part of that was transferring funds back into the general fund. And that served as, it, as far as the books look, it looked like a revenue source. So that's primarily why you see that decrease in there. And then the other, the other thing too is we did is we merged Tree City and Recreation before, when they're separate funds, but they were supported by the general fund. So what we did is we actually moved them back into the general fund last fiscal year. So you'll see that's primarily what that decrease is. But overall, we are looking about an 18% increase in revenues for next year. Next slide. So here you can see the contrasting revenues. So I wanted to show this with the fiscal year 19 actuals and 20 actuals. The 21 adopted, the 21 estimated, and then the preliminary for 2022. And also keep in mind that the actuals for fiscal year 19 and 20 do include one-time revenues, which is the ERAF as well as any emergency relief. So you'll see our actuals for fiscal year 19 were 16 million in revenue. Fiscal year 20 dropped to 14 million. Fiscal year 21 adopted, dropped that down to 11 million. Our estimated for fiscal year 21 is now 12.5 million. And our preliminary for fiscal year 2022 is 13 million. So you'll see it's starting to trend up. Everything that I've been attending was statewide as far as what the trends are financially. They are showing that revenues will be increasing, but not at a level and they, they're anticipating about a three-year ramp up to get back to pre-COVID 19 numbers. Next slide. So for expenses, what we're doing right now is all the department has, are actively working on their fiscal year 22 budgets. We want to remain fiscally cautious with our expenses. For the department has, their instructions have been to have no significant budget increase or request. The budget that we are looking at is the reinstatement of salary and benefit concessions. With the exception of, right now, we want to be able to maintain those frozen positions, which equates to about $500,000. But we do want to reinstate the training budget. The fiscal year 21 budget, which we're currently in, the only training that is being allowed are things that are mandatory training or essential training. And that usually has to do with certifications. But we really do want to reinstate the training budget so, so staff can, can really, you know, hone in on some of those, those really important skills and some of the training that, that we feel it's important to be able to, for continuity of government. That being said, with what we're looking at primarily, the city may have difficulty balancing without the actual use of reserves. So it's something that we're looking at that 26% reserve level, knowing that we might need to bring that down further from what we currently are, you know, from what we've, from where we're at. So the next slide. Some other factors that will factor into that final reserve level of the 26%. Again, that is just an estimate. The budget estimates, there's some budgets where we're at right now, if expenses are less than what we're expecting, that's going to increase our budget reserve level. The other thing that can affect that budget reserve level is if we do get any other federal government relief. As of right now, in this current fiscal year, we've only had $75,000 in COVID relief. But we also know that there are active conversations right now at the federal level. There is the HR 1319- There is the HR 1319. As of today, it's $1.1 million for St. Helena, but there are active discussions, so we don't know what that final dollar amount is going to look like. If we do get that 1.1 million, it also means that that's going to, that's going to help our ending reserve level. Additionally, we have TOT now that, now that hotels are back online, if there's any fluctuations in TOT revenue, that is only going to help our bottom line, as well as sales tax numbers. So those are just some other factors to take into consideration in the big overarching overall picture of what our finances look like starting out in the next fiscal year and, and, and in developing our 2122 budget. So with that, again, it's very high level. There's a little more details in the report, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, as well as the city manager, Presswich.
Are there any questions or thoughts from council at this point on the, the budget overview here? I'm seeing none. Thank you, April. That's, oh, I'm seeing Mr. Hall.
Sorry about that. I tried to do the raise hand thing, but it doesn't look like.
It's coming up now.
Oh, I see. It's a little delayed. Thank you, April. I just had one quick question. You were referencing frozen positions. Were, were those positions, positions that were furloughed during the crisis? Or were those positions that were originally sort of approved additions to staff or a combination of both?
They were actually vacant positions that we ended up just not hiring for during the, you know, the formation of the budget.
Okay. There, there were also positions that, a couple of positions that were, that became vacant through the retirement incentive program.
Okay. Thank you. So, so what I'm hearing is we had basically a net decrease in overall staff levels in addition to staff basically volunteering to reduce their compensation overall. And we're, we're just going to hold, hold tight there for a while.
It's, it's a little early for us, but I think when, when we look at the forecast, it, it appears that we're going to have some challenges, at least at the beginning of the year. And this could change as the hotel tax revenues, which are the most volatile right now for us to, to predict. We don't have great, because one of our larger hotels has been closed for over a year. We just don't know what that performance is going to be like. And we do anticipate that this former Los Alcois Hotel, now Aliyah, Aliyah, will be reopening soon. We don't know what that performance will be. The sales tax is fairly easy to forecast based on actuals and projecting out, but it is suppressed right now a little bit, and we, we, we want to be cautious. The, so I think it will be important to consider sustaining those vacant positions or most of them until the, the revenue performance is delivered and, at a time when we can actually consider reinstating some of those. And as a result, that does affect service levels in various departments because these are positions that are frozen in a number of different departments.
Right. Thank you, Mark. I guess that's, that's kind of what I was trying to understand as we head into this next sort of part of the meeting, which is all about all of the demand of things that we'd all like to see. I think it's good to note that our ability to actually execute right now is probably, you know, it's, it's not 100% today. So I think the more conservative we are going through our, our work plan, the better for the time being.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm seeing Mr. Chateau and then Mr. Doring.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I had a question because what I saw in here is that we are going to do the reinstatement of the salary and benefit concessions. So that was from the volunteer, the, the employees that so wonderfully all agreed during the hard times to take an across-the-board pay cut, and we're reinstating that. Is that correct?
We entered into a two-year extension of those contracts. And so the contract provided for a suspension of any deferred compensation match. We froze step increases. Everyone in the organization took approximately a 5% reduction in, in pay. And there were triggers. If, if, for example, the, the federal legislation that April mentioned is signed in the coming weeks, that, that plus continued performance on the hotel tax and the sales tax side would allow for reinstatement of the voluntary concessions sometime this fiscal year. But the, the agreement was that we entered into with each bargaining group was a two-year agreement. And the second year, beginning in July, on July 1, allowed for that, that 5% to come back to the baseline that was established in 2019.
Okay, so that's what we're planning for now.
That's what we're, because that's a contractual obligation, we are, we are forecasting, we are using that budget assumption as we build the preliminary forecast for 2022.
Great. I just wanted to make sure because we heard how exhausted everybody is and how hard they've been working. And we know that there's impact too, when we don't get the full hours doing all the things that we really want to do and accomplish. Thank you.
And thank you. And I'm seeing Vice Mayor Doring.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment more than ask questions. I would, I would just say this, that I think it's important that we maintain a 30% reserve. And I do not want, by my silence, to give the impression that I would ever green light dipping into further reserves. I would remind staff that that is ultimately a policy decision by the city council. And so it, it would be good not to have staff get too far out in front in terms of, of the idea that this council member is, would ever green light even dipping into those reserves, even below the 26%. I think the goal would be to get back to 30% because that is, that has helped us tremendously when we have times of crises. And so I just want to put that on the table, that I would not ever be comfortable going even below 26%. The goal should be getting back up to 30%.
Thank you for that. And, and yes, you're correct. This is a, yeah, how we balance is going to be a policy conversation. We didn't, in the prior year, talk about any significant revenue opportunity or pursuit of any additional revenue as a, as a solution. So that's certainly another alternative to using reserves. And because about 60% of our general fund budget relates to labor costs, obviously, when we look at the labor side of the equation, there are a variety of options related to how we, how we balance. So this is a real early forecast. We wanted to just make you aware of what, how we're, how, how the numbers are being forecasted right now in terms of programming in relatively conservative revenue projections, along with some of the forecasted adjustments. For example, increases in healthcare costs, changes in PERS rates, I mean, things like that. And we've made assumptions that we sustain the city's, the council's commitment to a, an accelerated pay down of the PERS unfunded liabilities, things like that. So it's very early. I will say that I think it's very possible that the reserve levels will close above 26%. That will be dependent on the federal legislation. That will be dependent on the continued sales tax performance and the hotel tax performance. But it wouldn't surprise me if we end up, the close of the fiscal year, you know, actually materially ahead of 30%, higher than 30%.
And as we get into our goals discussion, we will be talking about where we can look for more revenue, those types of discussions. So as this conversation moves forward, I'm seeing Mr. Hall.
Thank you. I just, Mark, thank you for that. And Paul, thank you very much. I was just going to comment, right now, the, the existing projection based on current city workload is a, looks like almost a flattening, but the thought would be that we're going to need additional revenue, or it comes out of reserves. So 20, 26% is likely to decline. That's given our existing known workload. And today, we're trying to go through and figure out, I mean, in theory, all of that workload is already committed and in process. So our exercise of adding additional work on is just going to exacerbate that issue. The discussion almost feels like, what is it we can take off the burden of staff? So we can get focused on a few things, lighten our expenses overall, and really get clear about executing just those critical things that we need to move those ratios back the other way. Anyway, it's just, just a thought.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for the input. And we will, Mr. Presswich, if we feel we've gone through that item, are we ready to move on now to the, the goals?
We are, unless you would like to take a, a very short break. I think the first, the first goal that we'll talk about is going to be the, the long, one of the longer conversations. It has a number of initiatives. And I, you know, the thinking is that we'll spend a little bit more time on the first one. And as we look at some of the feedback that we've already received, there is a lot of consensus with feedback on a number of these initiatives, many of which are in motion. And I think some of the subsequent discussions with the various goals will move a little faster because of that. They're also shorter. So if the council would like to take a short break now, we can do it, or we'll power through and maybe take a break after the first goal discussion, which could be a long conversation.
I want to see the appetite of the count. I want to see the appetite of the council. I'm seeing Mr. Doring's hand up.
Yeah, I would be happy to take a break right now. I, I, I do want to make one point. I note that there was a public comment that was sent in, and it's not, at least on the agenda that I have. Typically, we attach a public comment. There may be more public comments. I just don't want to remiss in, in letting that not be attached or somehow being a part of the discussion. So just, that's all.
Thank you. I'm seeing Cindy.
It's attached. It was attached this morning. And there was no other public comment.
So what, so why don't we take 10?
It is not attached on the, I, I clicked on the website, opened up the agenda. I do not see it attached, but maybe it's on another version. Thank you.
So with that, maybe we can look for that. And during this break period, if we take 10 minutes now, we'll come back at 9:55 and get started on the goals. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're seeing everybody coming back on. Cindy, can you hear me? Okay, very good. Okay, we have our council. Just want to make sure we're all on here. I'm seeing our council is back on, our city manager, our city clerk. Are we ready to go? Cindy and Mark Presswich, Mr. Presswich?
I believe so. So to follow up on the public comment note, I am having trouble seeing that when I refresh my browser. It may be browser related, and there are others that are seeing the public comment that's attached. So I don't know that we've completely figured that question out. Cindy, is that correct at this point? Okay. So the city clerk has emailed each of the city council members a screenshot of what she sees on her computer, but I'm unable to see that online. So I recognize that there's a public comment that may not be visible to some people at this time.
So as we go through our goals, we'll make sure to open the public comment to make sure that, that these comments are incorporated in what we're, we're doing.
Right. So at this time, we're going to begin walking through various goals. So as you recall, we have, when we establish goals, we think of them, we have thought of them as three-year goals with various initiatives that, that move forward in support of those goals over periods of time. And, and as a result of the fires and the PSP, I'm sorry, and the pandemic, we have had some items that are still in motion, a number of items. And the first goal that we're going to look at is our infrastructure-related goal. And I'm going to invite Priya to share her screen, and we'll zoom in as necessary to, to take a look at what we see here. And so as a little backdrop for everyone watching, the council members were provided a survey via Survey Monkey and information asking the, asking the question, do you support continuation of priorities from the prior year that continue into the current year? And in, under this goal, the infrastructure goal, there are a number of capital projects and other initiatives that are already in motion, many of which are well beyond 50% complete. And we've also invited the council members to consider pausing advancement on any of these items. So that's the second column that you see here. And then we'll keep notes, we'll track notes. And when, when you see this again, we're also going to incorporate how far along certain items are. So for example, with the first one, adoption of an integrated utility master plan, this is almost done. We're reviewing a final document now. I would consider this at least 90% complete. And when we asked the council members for feedback on the various initiatives that we're tracking from the prior year, the first 12 that we see here, all five of the council members said, continue these items. And, and, and these are items that we have been working on and talking about for quite a long time. With row seven and row eight, the receive and address comments. Last year, it was submitting design plans to the state. Now we're, we've received comments. And so the next step is to receive and address comments that, I'm sorry, we haven't received comments. We're going to receive comments, and then we will need to address and, and resolve those for those two capital projects. So perhaps we can talk about the, the first 12 here first. But I, I think the clarity from this exercise is that the council is in full support of advancing the utility master plan work, the plans to ensure business continuity during the forthcoming streetscape project, complete the glass fire after action report, which will come later this, this spring, continue design of the tank two rehab, the Bell Canyon intake tower, the bell house valve replacement. We recognize we have work to do on the will serve policy. The Pope Street College Crosswalk is currently in design. That's approximately 75% designed to date. The glass fire compromised our perm, permag building at the water treatment plant, and we're in the process of, through the emergency, repairing that. And then number 12 is, the council has just recently set in motion the recycled water main and pump work from the wastewater treatment plant to Mills Lane. So that's not started at this point, but that we've just set in motion that work. Are there any comments on the first 12 lines from the council?
Mark, Mark, as we, as we begin this conversation, what I do want to say is as we think about all our goals and we think about the constraints, both financially and capacity-wise, I do also think we, we need to consider the aspect of fire preparedness and emergency preparedness as sort of a holistic concept that, that we weave into our thoughts as we look at all these goals. I just want to make, make sure to put that marker at the beginning of our conversation as we, we want to create this culture of preparedness and being ready. So it will, it will relate to many goals, but I wanted to place that marker. Are there any other council comments now from where Mr. Presswich has left this? Mr. Hall? Council member Hall?
Thank you. Mayor, you just referenced that as we look through this, we are to also think about the cost and capacity to execute. And I had a, a difficult time. I like this process overall, but I had a difficult time understanding those two things relative to the list of projects in front of us. There's no, no real visibility here. So I know this is our first meeting on this, but maybe as we progress through this conversation over throughout the rest of the day or into our next meeting, that there's some sense for how much of our capacity to execute, our ability to execute against all of these initiatives is actually being used today by existing things that are in flight. If 60% of our total general fund right now is staff, how much of that is going against all of these different initiatives today? In other words, what's our ability to actually add anything to this list, given that our staff is actually reduced? So that's just my, my context at the start.
Thank you. Any other comments? But Mark, I'll leave it to you to pull things along here.
And feel free to jump in because I'm not able to see everyone at the same time. But I, I think the context for goal one, and we're going to talk about the, the, the way that goal one is stated as well. So when we scroll down a little bit lower, we have a question on row 24 that asks, do you have any comments on how goal one is stated? So we'll, we'll talk about that after we walk through each of these items. And we also, for, for comments on, if, if someone had a comment on the pause advancement, we have some comments that we've captured in that survey that will, will also add to the conversation. The, the infrastructure-related goals, this is the area of the city that's most challenged, I think, from a staff capacity perspective. Of course, we use a number of outside consultants and engineering assistants to advance a number of these items. But as you know, we have a, a public works director, city engineer transition underway yes, now. Erica's last day will be next week. And she and I spent approximately two and a half hours yesterday walking through all but the water-related projects with our interim city engineer, John Wanger, with coastline engineering to acquaint him with projects and their pri, and the priority in terms of timing. And so that was a very helpful, fruitful conversation. The other, I think, consideration is it will take a little time to, to find a replacement person, and that person will have a learning curve. And there's, there are a lot of projects happening. And of course, we're able to help spot for Mr. Wanger's perspective, the highest priorities. And we know that we have the downtown streetscape, the wastewater treatment plant, the farms, the associated capital projects that facilitate the farmstead development approval. There are a number of projects like that and also some emergency projects that have timing issues associated with the grant funds. The, the guardrail project on Silverado Trail is another one of those. So this is, this, these, the, the items under goal one, there are, there are items within here that do have, and also on the CIP list, that have a lot of public works involvement. And there are items that have, you know, timing issues associated with them that will lead us to moving, keeping a close eye on those initiatives. And, and there's a lot of work to do. So that's, there's clearly a lot of work here. I think with items one through, I'm sorry, three through 12 here, the consensus is those remain on the work plan as, as priorities. When we bring you back the, this document in, in about three weeks, I think the, the art of evolving this is going to be adding some additional information in terms of how far along these projects are, as well as some critical budget information. And in terms of, are these fully funded? What's the source? What fund are they touching? So we do have plans to augment the, the information here so that when we present this to you, again, you have an opportunity to look carefully at the initiatives and assist with prioritization. Okay, so it may be helpful to zoom in a little bit more without the notes section. So on rows 13, we'll go a little slower here. Row 13, the Pratt and Main Street intersection. This is work that has had a, one detour with respect to red, to red zones. But the, there is, there are plans that are approximately 75%. There is a, I think, a, a conversation that still needs to happen with ATSC before this moves to the council. But we do have some, some design improvements to enhance the safety of that intersection. And there is a, a comment related to pausing advancement on, or there are, there is at least one person that mentioned pause advancement on this particular item.
Mark, shall I let you seek the comment here? I don't want to, I don't, I want to make sure that it's, it's dovetailing into your presentation.
Right. I, I think that when I see four, one, you know, a four and one, I, I do think that what this is communicating to the staff is that these are essentially remaining as priority items. And you'll, and you'll see as we look, as we continue the conversation today, there's not a lot of, in most cases, when we look at all of the initiatives that we'll talk about, on the, the green-related items, which really are, are items that are intended to be items that can be accomplished within the next 12 months, in many cases are already in motion. Yellow, which we will talk about in a little bit, relate to items that are considered important, but set aside until green items are able to be taken care of within that goal. And then we have a red category that we've asked feedback on, which we're acknowledging that these are good ideas, but given capacity issues, they, they will, would be considered at a future goal-setting workshop. So. Kathy, I'm going to mute you. I think there's a little. Thank you. So in terms of the Pratt and Main intersection, are there any comments on, on that particular item? Our next step is a conversation with ATSC and the consultant.
Mike, my, my one comment on this is, is that it's the entrance to our town and from the north. And I just wanted to support the continuation as a sort of tone setter for the, the town. When folks enter the town, we have a, you know, challenging dynamic with a, we're in sort of an organ in the larger body of the county, and we share the, we share as, as residents also with an industry here. And so establishing traffic safety calming measures as people enter, I think, is, is an important aspect. And Mr. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo that, Mayor. And my understanding is this is basically a health and safety issue, right? This is a dangerous inter, interchange. Folks come down valley and come up over the rise there on a turn and run right into the center interchange, correct?
We, we see an opportunity for some safety improvements, and they, they come in a variety of, you know, degrees.
Yeah, great.
The next item is the Caltrans permitting. So completing the permitting in order to advance the project, it's, we're, we need our NEPA clearance from Caltrans, and then we need to pursue an E76 and a notice to proceed on the project. There's review involved at Caltrans in order to execute. And so we are, the city engineer, public works director will be asking Caltrans again for an update. We've been continuing to follow up on when we will receive our NEPA, but we do need to file the E76 by the end of June. And then we anticipate some, some period of time for Caltrans to review and then issue the E76, which would then allow us to proceed with the project. And so this one is, you know, the permitting is imminent. And I think there's consensus here that the council will continue to advance this project. The next item is the Vine Trail. And, and feel free to jump in with comments. The next one is bringing back route options for the Vine Trail. And this one's at approximately 50% complete now. Is there a comment on this particular item?
Well, I have a question.
Yes.
What would consequence of pausing this be?
Erica?
The consequent of pausing this is missing the opportunity for the Vine Trail Coalition to apply for grants, to begin design, potentially construction. They're temporarily haven't gotten it. They were temporarily declined on the, the grant from Yountville as two Sanlino limits, but that hasn't gone through the regional round with MTC for grant funding. But this would be the, the stopgap from Napa. But this would be the, the stopgap from Napa up to Calistoga, because the Pratt to Calistoga gap is being designed. It's almost 100% designed right now. So San Lina would be the only route that hasn't been decided upon. And there would be a gap between the city limits and the rest of the Vine Trail.
Thank you. I'll just jump in with a comment. Councilmember Hardy, I don't know if you had a follow up.
Oh, please. Go ahead.
Again, wanting to sort of point out that we are in Oregon in the larger body of the county, and this is a project that is moving forward through the county and with the opportunity for grants and also the opportunity to be proactive about a design. If, if we know something is coming through, so that we're ready to receive and have it pass you know, come into our town in a, in a way that's best managed. So that to me is the opportunity now.
All right. Moving to the next item, public works improvement standards. We are working on this. Every city has public work standards for construction of public improvements, civic improvements. And we've been doing this work in-house. It has been impacted by fires and COVID and our assessment is for about 75% complete. But we have treated it as a bit of a yellow item in terms of when we are able to have additional breathing time to, to work on this, we do. But there's a little bit more work to do and Erica can provide some additional context if you have. Erica, if you want to add anything to that or if there are questions.
Just to provide that, the last time these were updated, there's been sporadic updates, but 1993, there's a lot of good items that are not in there, such as a sump pump standard. So people are pumping year round with, in the high areas to, to the curb and gutter, they have to tie into a storm drain. There's also others, you know, industry standards that we don't have in our city. So it's time to upgrade. We still have ADA ramps that are no longer compliant on our city standards. So it's just really a refresher. We, we do have Green Valley that assisted with this endeavor since we needed to update the, the standard plans, but it's really making it clearer and helping those who are developing or, or even city contractors doing the right work and, and current standard work. And we're so close. We're, we're planning during COVID, right before COVID start to, to really bring this to council by June and as everyone knows, everything broke loose and, and we did not get back to it. So it'd be nice to, to get this done this year if possible, since it is so close. It's just really having staff capacity to sit down, review the plans and get those back to you. And also clarifying the sewer lateral, that's another thing. People are still confused that they own the sewer lateral out to the main. And that's another standard that would be cleared up with this.
Councilmember Hall?
Erica, does this update trigger any required improvements on the city's part? Or is it just simply a document that's for us to aspire to over time?
It, it's a document that should be updated over time and it just hasn't. We're not the only agency that's had that. So it's just bringing it up to today. And then as changes are made, we should try to update those pages and swap them out moving forward, just so it's current. And the great news is these will all be CAD drawings that will have, the city staff will have, or the city will have, and someone can modify maybe in-house or externally at a moderate price and not, you know, we're moving from the old hard copy signature pages to the now electronic phase for the city.
Okay, great. We, we have CAD skillset in-house?
We were trying to.
Thank you.
One, one consideration on, on having a lot of things on our plate is with items, sometimes everything's paused because of something happening at another agency. We're waiting for one project to move forward. So the idea of keeping, keeping important things on the radar here, so staff can slot them in as they're seeing if one project is stalled because of a permit that's needed at another agency, they can jump on something that's sitting on another part of the radar. So I think, I, I recognize how stacked we are. I do think things on the radar and our staff has demonstrated their ability to, to slot things in. And something like this is, as you, it's again, one of these legacy things, sort of like the, the handbook, et cetera, that if we can work on it as we go, I think that's important to get us all updated with the sort of trusting of staff to slot in when they can.
Is there a consensus to leave this as a green for now? I think with permission that we essentially work to advance it, there could be a delay with the, the, the transition. I think that it's fair to assess that that work probably would happen under the new director. And it may be later in the year unless we're able to somehow effort this in the, in the first three to six months or work with some outside consultant to assist us in delivery of this. But this is one that is going to slip, I think, given other projects that are on critical timelines. So with your permission, if it stays on green, we would probably have to, to from time to time, set that aside to a slightly lower priority.
I'm seeing no opposition to that as I look at the here. And I do think, you know, you've demonstrated, the staff has demonstrated the ability to move from project to project as, as you see. And I, I believe that's part of the reason we were able to achieve so much.
Okay. The next item is really not so much design. It's really construct and paint. Essentially, it's, it's the lines on Spring Street. So the, the consensus was achieved in late 2020. And it's just, it was a matter of waiting for better weather. So we're still waiting for that warmer, slightly warmer weather. Whether we do want it to rain a lot between now and the time we do this project. But this is really imminent and just needs to be, these just need to be stripes added to the street at this point.
Councilmember Chetel?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind us all when we heard Lucy's voice, because I hear that voice from the students and the parents all the time about these issues because the schools have worked with us and done a really good job of encouraging and even teaching kids how to ride bikes that haven't had the same access to even buying a bike. And now we're working on ways to get bikes to kids who want them. So all of this with the Vine Trail and the whole safe routes to school to me is so important. And this is a piece of that. One of the things that makes the city so great is being able to get around and that we are small. And it's really important to me that we continue to make it as safe as possible for kids on those bikes. So that more and more grow up, understanding and having the benefits of what it means when you get to bike and walk in the community. And how much more connected you are and it's healthy and there's so many benefits even for mental health. With the pandemic, so many more people want to be out on trails and biking and outside and what's easy, convenient and safe. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm very supportive of that as well. This, growing this bicycle culture, the safe culture of safety for our, our, our families, kids, et cetera. So all these bicycle packet, elements coming into a full package, I'm very supportive of.
Thank you. And I, I think there's consensus that this stays on the, on the work plan. On the number 18 here, the complete phase one of the Safe Routes to School Active Transportation Plan. This is the, the conversation, this comes from the conversation that the city council had on December 8th, 2020. So line 18 is the first phase, looking at the Spring Street and the Madrona corridors. And that project has launched. We've had a kickoff meeting and there will be an in the field stakeholder meeting in, in the month of March, this in a couple of weeks, where we will invite some stakeholders. There's a member of the city council and the ATSC committee that will join them along with Patrick Band from the Bike Coalition. And we'll be looking at ways to enhance the safety of those corridors for bikers and walkers and students. And so that's a very, that probably is about a three month process to get from start to some designs, solutions that we can bring forward to ATSC and the city council. But that is in motion now. And the next one relates to that. That is just the, the request from the council to also think holistically about the entire city. So that's more of a phase two. We'll work on phase one first and then the consultant, same consultant would transition to phase two after the initial intersections are looked at. Are there comments on either one of those?
Ms. Chetel or Councilmember Chetel, I'm seeing your hand up. I wasn't sure if that was from the last time.
It was. Thank you. And my comments from the last timer for this one as well.
Thank you. Okay. I think I'm not seeing any other hands.
Okay. And then the final item here is the conservation easement that's needed for us to complete. It's something that does have grant funding impact. So if it's not completed, it is expected under the grant and it risks funding for the grant if we don't complete this. There were a couple of questions I think raised related to this. Whether the, the conservation easement would block future considerations if bridging was needed in that area. And so I want to invite our public works director to address that. And if you have questions about the grant and the funding, our direct finance director, April Mits, is available to answer those questions.
Thank you. That was one of the considerations. As some of you may not be aware, Councilmember Coburnstein was appointed to help with the sub, as a subcommittee or council member to help get this across the line. It was with the, we were hoping to bring this in September back to council. But that time, the state water resources reminded the city that there were some unfinished items not completed at the time of the project completion, which was a project completion report. An engineering project completion report was not completed as, as required of the grant in 2012. So we're trying to get a cost for that and get that completed so we can complete this entire closeout with the state. But that being said, the conservation easement did include the causeway across, that's the Adams Street extension. It's literally a bridge or, or a river crossing, a causeway. So that does not affect the flood plain or, or the, the, when there is a major flood. It does not impact the habitat terraced area, which is below the levee. It also includes the social trail loop that is currently below the levee and goes around the habitat. We're very fortunate that these were able to get agreed or concurrents from the state because at one point in early, I think 15 or 16, the state was adamant against this causeway. But with the general plan and other prior plans, and at the initial sequo of the flood control project in 2003, it indicated that this was always the intent of the project. So that, you know, it is permissible when the easement gets closed out. So we're hoping that this easement can move forward now. The attorneys from the land trust, the state and city attorney, Ethan Walsh have reviewed it that we can get this back to council in the near future while trying to get that, that the prior engineering certification and project closeout report done in order to receive the remaining retention funds from the state.
Thank you. That answers the question that, that I had to make sure that we keep our options open for our arteries, our, our street arteries. I'm seeing Councilmember Hardy, then Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mary. Also, I just want to be sure I understand what Ms. Smithies was explaining. And so I'm going to just state what I think is happening here and, and and the Smithies, if, if you would just correct comment as appropriate. But what I'm understanding here is that there is a draft conservation easement in play with Napa County Land Trust as the grantee. And that the work that needs to be completed has to do with in part, just prerequisites from a state agency perspective on, on what they need to see done before they will bless the easement, which I, I, I don't think I need to know the tie into the state agency there, but there must be one. But it also sounds as though the subject of the language or terms, conditions of the conservation easement has been part of a dialogue between the city and the state agency and that then completing the things on the state agency punch list becomes necessary in order to finalize the document itself. Am I understanding that correctly?
So just like the York Creek Dam, we had a, the state funded this project. I believe it's $9 million and Director Mits can correct me there. But in order to finally close out the grant side of it, regardless of the easement, the easement is also a state requirement. Because they are the grantor. So they, the, all along, we knew that there is the conservation easement, but this was kind of sprung on us in September saying, oh, by the way, this was never completed. And there was a project completion report done in 2012 by Waterways, who's been doing our 10 years of post-construction monitoring. But the report was not following the, the prerequisites of the grant itself. So the conservation easement, I think, could be brought forward, get concurs from city council to say, yes, execute this. But meanwhile, we've still got to complete this other grant requirement to finally get the, the, the retention that's been withheld since the project was completed, which I think is a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Well, maybe I'm still not quite clear. So there's funding that relates to the project. I, I, I'm sure nothing like millions of dollars of funding is required for the easement. That's just a document. So I, I'm, I'm still not quite clear on the tie-in between this line item, complete conservation easement and the funding that, that you're discussing.
The fund, the conservation easement was a requirement of the state grant.
Got it. That, that says, that says it all. Thank you.
Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. Just following on Councilmember Hardy's comments. I was just wondering in this, in this process, is there some way maybe not today, but moving forward, we can flag each of these initiatives as what, what is basically a regulatory compelled project where we, we really aren't in control of being able to pause it regardless. We, we've got to do it, period. So how do we flag those items here? Similarly, like the Pratt Avenue intersection that, you know, shouldn't we have a health and safety flag or something like that on some of these items that just basically says, these are critical? The city must continue committing its limited resources to, to these efforts. And that will give us some idea of how much additional capacity, if any, we have for anything else. Anyway, it's just a thought. It'd be great to, to see that.
Good suggestion. Helps us delineate critical items. Thank you for the input. I'm seeing Ms. Smithies.
If, if that's the case, should the wastewater treatment plant be in your number one goals? I didn't see that there and that needs to be financed and constructed. Just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
It's going to be covered in the CIP section, the wastewater treatment plant. I, I think the other perhaps helpful flag might be whether this is land, whether these initiatives are landing on city staff or consultants and who. So that we can stay organized on that front as well. I think that provides the council additional context. So we, when we bring this back to you in, on March 25th, we can add that information as well.
That, that would be great. Whether it's internal versus external labor is all we need to know. Again, we're just trying to get down to what capacity do we have internally? And if something's still a high priority, we'd like to do it in-house, but we don't have staff to do it, then we can farm it out if we've got money to do it.
Okay.
Thank you. So that should give you what you need on item 20, Mr. Presswich?
Yes. And I want to acknowledge there is a comment about how the goal is stated, which is similar to the first bullet point under the explanation for an item that was raised as a consideration to pause advancement. And when we, when we move to the new items, there, there are going to be three or four comments about water supply and another comment about revenue. Then we'll talk about the yellow and red and there, there's at least two items that seem to have some healthy support at this point in time. So are there? So uh, are there any comments anyone would like to make now about how the goal is stated? In context to these comments?
I'm not seeing any hands.
Okay. So uh, Priya, let's move to the next worksheet and these are new items that uh we invited council members to share with us any other uh items that they're thinking about that uh they would like the the city that they think falls under essentially the infrastructure umbrella. And uh, three different council members wrote about water supply uh related issues. So their supply management policies, water emergency regulations and water conservation standards and regulations. And I will um remind us of our conversation just at our last council meeting where we we had a very robust conversation about ways to enhance water security. And we know that there are a number of initiatives that fall under that broader um umbrella. And uh, very helpful conversation. And I think that uh, that conversation can address some of the the ideas here. And the mayor and the vice mayor and I have a meeting scheduled next Thursday, I believe, to to review an initial framework that will eventually come back to the city council. So uh, there's probably a need to artfully uh address how we um also consider water security uh frameworks or strategies. And uh, and then in terms of revenue and funding options, it would be helpful to to receive some feedback on what the the comment relates to specifically.
Uh, is there a comment at this point or a hand up? Uh, Councilmember Hardy.
Uh, thank you, Mary Elsworth. But um, I I'm not going to be able to answer your specific question, uh, Mr. Presswich, but but I do have uh some comments uh that that are at least responsive to some of what you said. It it seems to me that just the way I think about it, our water supply management policies are the tools that we use to uh ensure water security. So for me, uh, those subjects are one of the same. And uh, secondly, while uh I think about all of these things uh in part um because of their long-term significance, I also believe that they're quite urgent in terms of our ability to plan ahead and respond to the possibility of a third below normal rainfall year in a row. And and that's, that's a large part of uh, my sense that these uh need to be on our high priority list. Thank you.
And I I support that as well. Looking at our water issues comprehensively, just the analogy of, you know, with a bucket, it doesn't matter where the hole is in the bucket, the water uh leaks, leaks when when it hits its level. So knowing what we have is a as comprehensively as possible in terms of our water management, I think is is critical. We don't want to leave a gap uh that that is uh allows for um uh a vulnerability. Uh, so I certainly support that uh sort of urgent uh uh look at our our water management security, considering uh our our drought uh or dry seasons and uh potential um climate issues that that may affect our our supply. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just thinking if if you guys are getting together as sort of a subgroup next week on this. Um, I don't know if Councilmember Hardy has thoughts already down on paper, but maybe he could share that with that group getting together next week.
I think that's great. And and any thoughts that any council member has on this? So we can, you know, look at the inventory and make sure we're we're seeing where any vulnerability could be and and how our our policies cover that. So appreciate that. And I certainly believe that.
Let's make sure before we make that invitation that we are not violating the Brown Act.
So if if the comments can be sent to me, uh, then I can route them to the the mayor and the vice mayor. I'm, I think it's clear that uh there's a a need for us to artfully develop a a specific uh task that we uh consider under the infrastructure, really could probably live under a couple of different goals, but uh, placing it under the infrastructure or other goal, we'll bring that back to the council on the 25th. And then in terms of the comment about the revenue and funding options and proactive financial planning, I think this comes up in another area that we'll discuss today. Uh, the city has some very, very significant financial, you know, project, projects uh coming in the next year and be and to in some cases, recent updates to cost estimates have uh revealed that they're now, you know, with the updated cost estimate, there's a shortage of funding and that's related to the wastewater treatment plant. We really need to resolve that now. There's, there's some additional analysis that we're looking at. The council also talked to us about uh their interest in having us value engineer and we'll be looking at ways that we value engineer and and reduce costs, but that's an example. There was an also a a vision about eighteen months ago that the downtown streetscape project would use a general fund loan to the project to help to be repaid with measure T monies. As our fund balance has been used through the COVID pandemic, you know, there's, there's going to be potentially some funding uh issues there. It may be better for the city to seek an infrastructure loan for the balance rather than use the general phone. General Fund is the bank for lending. Uh, but those are examples of uh challenges and the the work over the last two, there was a lot of work over the last two years with respect to civic improvements. Uh, first with a commissioned study on the uh the deficiencies within all of our assets. Uh, they all have uh limitations and needs for investment. And there was obviously a very active conversation for a possible city hall uh or library update uh uh in the coming years. And so I I know that's not lost on any of you. And so it does, I I think there's also been conversation about revenue for housing and and other, you know, whether it's infrastructure, water sewer, wastewater, we know that we have deficiencies there. General fund obligations or on projects like housing, um, there are, there is a need for revenue across the board. So I want to invite i- if there's a some specific feedback uh that we can capture from this idea uh with three members indicating this is a high priority uh interested in trying to to, I guess, peel back the onion a little bit more on on some of the thinking here.
One of the the concepts that's come up, and there are a number, and and perhaps that's a different day's conversation of the specific ways to look at building revenue. But one of the concepts that's come up is is a is looking for a bond. And is that something that uh if we as a council want to look at it, that staff can investigate that or is or does that come from a different avenue?
Uh, you know, it would start with needing to understand what type of um what would the funding be used for through a bond? Is it a specific project? Is it a variety of projects? Um, and then so knowing the purpose of the bond, we would be able to provide you some analysis of uh what type of numbers we would need for certain projects, depending on what that project or pro- projects, uh what they look like, um, along with a process for how that uh unfolds. So I I think you're referring to a general obligation bond, which would be a voter initiative mayor uh versus the city simply bonding for improvement. So it's a voter initiative. It has to align with an election. There's a significant uh timeline process associated with that, which would mean that we would need to begin working well in advance of an election date. So that's just, I'll stop there and uh, if you have any more clarification or or concepts, I think this is something that we can further refine.
Okay, I just wanted to put that out there. Are there any other council comments at this point on this item?
Uh, this, this item came from Paul Doring. So I think you've you've adequately described uh the concerns that I have uh Mark in terms of some of the shortfalls on on some of our larger infrastructure projects. Uh, the idea here is to to figure out a way now to try to address those shortfalls and try to come up with a creative approach, at least give you, give the council a menu of various options. Once we do value engineering, for example, at the wastewater treatment plant, and we know if we still have a shortfall, we need to plan for that and figure out ways to address these issues. Uh, even though we may not start those projects necessarily, some of those projects this year, like a city hall or whatever, those kinds of things, we should try to figure out ways or options or menus to try to pay for some of these things, starting that thinking process earlier rather than waiting to uh, you know, the project. Um, I mean, we're in a difficult time right now with the pandemic, so obviously that has to be taken into consideration, but it's really just a planning tool that we need and and maybe testing the appetite for a geo bond or something like that on the wastewater front. So yeah, you you've described it well, and I think that this will probably have to develop over time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Doring. I think what we can do is bring back a, you know, artfully written task that uh essentially asks the staff to present some creative, you know, funding alternatives for some of the, I think we need to inventory some of the civic improvements, infrastructure challenges, uh showcase those and then uh identify other sources of financing those improvements. And uh, we can include a general obligation bond concept as part of that. Um, so that uh we'll, we'll bring something back that we can bring forward under the infrastructure goal.
Councilmember Hall, did I see your hand?
Uh, thank you. I think uh Paul and Mark just just hit on what I was thinking is just that we're uh, you know, to be able to further that conversation, we're going to need to know how much money do we need? What what does that funding actually look like? And is it something that uh that we want to do or not? So uh, it is definitely a planning exercise and um, you know, I'm just sensitive to the fact that our or or some of our chief planning staff just told us they're exhausted. So it's quite a bit of work uh even to get that to come back to us. Uh, anyway, I don't know how they do that, but somewhere they're going to need some sleep at some point. But we definitely need these projects scoped and uh figured out and estimated and brought them back to the council as as soon as we can do it.
Thank you.
I think this is a an initiative that would land uh with the city manager and the finance department uh and in in consultation with public works. Uh, but we have a lot of very good information that that has been maturing in the last two to three years with uh, the G, the EMG study on assets, the weight of water, I'm sorry, the underground utilities master plan for all the water sewer storm drain uh numbers and and issues associated with that and the delivery of some of these projects, uh, including some future investments in the library and and civic infrastructure. So uh, I think that captures uh the feedback on new items. And so we'll transition to the yellow, red items that carry over that that we are, that we've brought forward to present to you. And uh, what we see here uh is some council feedback, particularly on the uh Rutherford pipe restrictions and the dam inundation mapping. And uh, Eric, I think it would be helpful just to briefly mention what what is needed from the Rutherford pipe restrictions concept and uh the process on the dam mapping. And then uh, receive some council feedback on whether we elevate this uh or is it something that is stays yellow, knowing that it's important, but it it takes a slightly second place to some of these other uh initiatives.
As far as the Rutherford pipe restriction, I think like as I discussed last week at Tuesday's meeting, I'm not sure if there really is a restriction. If we're able to draw over 600 acre feet a year from City of Napa um and at the rate of 62 or to 67 acre feet per month, we can definitely draw up to 800 acre feet um pending no issues with our pumping and draw from the City of Napa. So since I've been here, um, I've been told there's a restriction, but I believe it's evident from based on what we're able to draw from Rutherford that there isn't an issue with our actual annual allocation. And if we need to boost it up to 800 acre foot allocation. And and I don't know how much more to share there other than I think this could be a lower priority at this time. Um, with the evidence in hand that we are able to draw the water and and the additional water allocation that we have at this point in time.
I'm seeing Councilmember Hall, then Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you. I was just going to say, um, based on that conversation last week, I actually went down and uh tried to find the box down in Rutherford where this, the mystery, uh, I I had heard it was a reducer, something that was actually built into the line, but um, now I understand it's actually some sort of restriction if uh if it is. I don't know if it is, but one way we might be able to tell is um, and Erica, you would, you, I think, would know better than anybody, but uh, would be to simply go hydrant by hydrant and measure uh pressure. And if it drops somewhere, then maybe in that section, there's there's uh uh some sort of restriction, if that's the case. Maybe there's no restriction at all, but for some reason, this community believes that there's something there in that line or that line is of concern. So I think as we think about our broader conversation on water supply, uh, definitely, I think the the pipes coming into the city, we we need to understand what do we have, what don't we have? So anyway, that'd be my thought. I I don't know how much work is involved in measuring pressure uh hydrant by hydrant, but that might be one way to do it.
That's just like an interject staff was identified where they think the location is. They just having the staff time to go out there and do it. Um, I've gone back and forth with our prior water treatment plant um interim chief and then our prior now operations manager, distribution chief. And they identified the area, which I think is several hundred feet where they believe the restriction is. Um, it's just a matter of assigning staff to work on it has been the difficulty um in the past several years.
I've seen Councilmember Ha- uh Hardy.
Uh, yes, so uh going back to the um explanation about um you know, volume of water uh received and and that we can receive from the City of Napa, that sounded to me um as though it assumes um a constant um flow from the City of Napa uh over a 12-month period. And uh, my concern is with uh the possibility that we are not actually taking water from the City of Napa every month, 12 months a year, in which case in order to uh get to uh 600 acre feet or 800 acre feet, we would have months where we needed to pump more than the monthly average. Uh, and um, and that's that's really my concern here. Are are we, you know, as we think about uh purchasing additional water from the City of Napa, are we doing still under conditions where we might need in a single month to pump 100 acre feet uh rather than 60 or 80? And if that's the case, then it seems to me perhaps the uh pipe restrictions are of some concern. Uh, and the other concern that comes to mind when I think about that in relation to pressure, uh uh, and and in this regard, Councilmember Hall's comments are very helpful to me. Uh, pressure as as suggested would be higher uh um between the pump and the restriction than elsewhere, but um, I know that except where repaired and replaced to date, we're talking about a line that was uh constructed in 1948. So um, I would also be concerned about what happens if we're increasing pressure because we're trying to put more water through because we need it.
My my thought at this point, thank you for those comments, uh, is the the water-related issues um, and uh that connects to wastewater, et cetera. If we look at those comprehensively, uh, we're going to be meeting next week to talk about this water security concept comprehensively. So if these these items can be, you know, put forward together in that package, we can see, I think, some synergies in how we look at them all at once. Uh, certainly that mainline pipe coming up is a critical. Um, and I'm seeing uh Councilmember Chateau.
Yes, thank you. Um, Councilmember Hardy, your comments just got me thinking about one point about that pipe, the line being since 1948 and all of the recent comments we got on the water from Napa, the odor and the taste. I want to make sure as we're looking at the water issues, we're also looking at the water quality and I know it's safe. We were able to say that. And I know it's safe. We were able to say that. So it's passing the testing standard, but for me personally, it also needs to pass that it tastes decent and smells okay for our community. So I want us to be thinking of anything possible we can do with filtration or how do we make sure that that water quality, um, with the taste and the odor is good when we're getting it from Napa at the increased volume as well.
Thank you. I'm seeing, uh, councilmember Hardy as well. I just want to keep us mindful of time. If, if there are details that can be put forward towards the, the, the water security subcommittee, uh, to, to wrap in, um, as this goes towards our second meeting. So, uh, councilmember Hardy, any comments here?
Uh, yeah, just one final comment. It, it's not, uh, obvious to me how, uh, capital improvement projects fit directly into the, um, policy update that, uh, I understood to be the subject of your subcommittee work. But, uh, maybe I'm not understanding everything correctly.
In terms of, uh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, in terms of the, the water conversation that we had at our last council meeting, I think there's, uh, room for a section on policy, a section on projects, exception on, you know, different elements of this broader conversation of water security. And so that's how I was framing it. And I, I think we've seen examples, um, in the first two worksheets here that we can fold under the water along with the new, you know, the feedback on concept of adding some additional filtration for water from Napa, uh, et cetera.
Thank you. I saw a thumbs up from councilmember Hardy. So I think we're ready to, to look at that as a way to move forward. And then please, uh, as we've said, if somebody recognizes, uh, uh, an issue, it's, it's all of our responsibility, not just as council members, but as community members. Uh, if there's a problem regarding water, which is our, our critical element as well as air, we've got to be able to discuss it. So, um, input on that is really important. So thank you.
Okay. So i- in the interest of time, um, I think what I would recommend at this point for the yellow and red is that we, um, fold the, the two items with at least three, uh, high priority references into yellow. And we can revisit this at a, at the later conversation, but, uh, not to lose, uh, the, any of the other items. There's a lot of, uh, interest in, in considering the others, but perhaps, uh, placing them in red for now, uh, and the ability to revisit that in a few weeks.
Good.
Does that work?
I, I, I'm seeing so. I'm seeing some thumbs up. I believe we have, uh, consensus there.
Okay. So, uh, we can either, uh, I know that we're now pressed for time. So I can, I think if, if everyone's okay, we can power through. Um, is that okay, mayor?
Yes.
Okay. So the next goal relates to stabilizing, maintaining and improving access to housing. Uh, there's, uh, there are only four items that are listed in green. The fourth of four is develop short and long-term housing initiatives. I know there are a lot of ideas in the, in the community related to this. Um, and perhaps that fourth bullet here is something that can evolve a little bit, given some of the ideas that, uh, you've probably been a part of conversations on, and I have certainly. And, uh, there's a, a lot of enthusiasm for all of these items. Uh, the zoning codes in motion, we're also, uh, planning to update fees, uh, for housing. The general plan, housing updates in motion. And I think the, the real question is what does this row six become? And, uh, are there any comments on perhaps the row six item? Uh, along with the comment about, uh, augmentation of, um, support personnel and support.
Any council comments to start with on this? I think, oh, I'm seeing, uh, councilmember Hall.
Uh, uh, I, I just don't know what, what it means. Is the thought behind this that, uh, the city is investing in housing? Or is this essentially, uh, furthering a lot of the initiatives that we have underway right now? Uh, partnering with, with local nonprofits, et cetera, bolstering our affordable housing fund, things like that. Is this something different from that? Is this the city going out, buying dirt and trying to build, uh, housing or what, what is it?
It, it's not the city buying dirt, but, uh, we do have a comment under the new items on the next worksheet about advancing the use of one or more of our city-owned parcel, parcels for affordable housing. So certainly there has been some thinking related to possible use of one of our city-owned properties for housing. There's certainly a conversation that could happen about one or more parcels. Uh, I know that our town, St. Helena and St. Helena Housing, other, uh, nonprofits have some specific ideas on inventory and avail, you know, further taking a fresh look at inventory and the, the sites where we real, you know, the, the housing element and the zoning code. These are, um, baseline efforts that will help in create the incentive for investment. But, uh, we do, we will have some fairly significant Rena numbers to meet in the coming years. And, uh, there has been some thinking and recommendations related to, uh, not only taking a fresh look at where those units might go around the city, private and or public parcels, but also, uh, funding and whether there's perhaps some interest in augmenting funding beyond the, the measure E, which is only a 1% hotel tax. That's a, at best, uh, almost $300,000 a year in today's dollars. But is there any interest in considering some other type of financial support or financial financing revenue, new revenue for, uh, helping the delivery of these affordable units?
The, thank you, uh, Mark. I was just trying to understand, um, what, what to do about housing, obviously, uh, in the community. And I think we're exploring lots of different things. I, I kind of view our role, uh, in policy setting as creating an environment to help accelerate progress in this space. That's kind of how I view our role. So that's where I was starting to, uh, take a step back. If the city is planning to get into, uh, construction management itself, then that's, that's a different deal entirely. I think we should be, and we, we have things going right now, our zoning codes, impact fees, et cetera. Maybe there's a variety of other, other levers there that, uh, we have, uh, at our disposal to, to create a much more incentivized and motivating environment for outside investment here. That, that's it.
Thank, thank you. And I'm seeing councilmember Chateau.
Thank you, mayor. Um, city manager Presswitch, I just wanted to ask if you had any thoughts on how we do number six, develop and recommend short and long-term housing initiatives with the current staff that we have, knowing that with the current economic environment, we're not doing new hires, new positions.
I think that's a good question. If I, uh, to answer that, I, I would suggest, uh, one or two council members, uh, that I work with, one or two council members and representatives from nonprofits to sit down and put together a list of no more than five, three to, you know, three to maybe three priorities on what could be done now, uh, to help, uh, organize some of the perhaps short-term items. It, it doesn't mean that we wouldn't, you know, there wouldn't be value in looking at longer-term initiatives too. And certainly the general plan housing element has ideas. Uh, we're going to be going through an update on that. Uh, and, uh, so I think there, there's probably room for refining some ideas that can be brought to the council as a package or feedback, uh, sooner rather than later because of, um, the, the forthcoming Rena numbers that we're going to need to meet. I mean, those are, we're looking at maybe 254 units, a lot of them in the very low range. Uh, and well, those units may require some significant subsidies. And at the moment, we don't have a lot of, of public money that's available to support delivery of those projects. So that will create challenges.
I want to jump in with just a thought here as we talk about capacity. Um, you know, there may be an advantage to talking to some of the other municipalities, uh, and, and looking at, uh, uh, Napa with the Napa Housing Authority. Uh, we may be able to get some support in areas like that, also with our nonprofits. Um, the idea of a comprehensive strategy, just like with water, if we think about housing, uh, and then, you know, pulling all those elements in together, um, you know, with our town, uh, St. Helena, the St. Helena Housing Coalition, and then, and then I think I mentioned Fair Housing, Napa, and that the authority, so that it's a comprehensive look and we look for support where we can. And I think Mr. Presswitch suggesting a subcommittee of a few council members, do we want to identify that today? Or do we want to, um, uh, have folks, uh, submit an interest to it as we, as we move forward? Any thoughts, Mark, Mr. Presswitch?
Probably in the interest of time, we can bring that back and, and refine that. And, and if any council member would like to be a part of that, I can, uh, note that as part of our conversation at the next meeting.
Very good. I'm seeing councilmember Hardy.
Yes, I'm interested.
And I'm seeing, uh, Mr., uh, councilmember Hall with his hand up. So there's an interest there as well. Very good. Thank you. And I think, yeah, looking, uh, looking, uh, looking comprehensively as, as our subject matters is, is great for coming up with a strategic and tactical approach. So, um, with that, uh, Mr. Presswitch, do we feel we can move forward?
Yes. So on the next, uh, worksheet, we just have two items. We talked about one of those, which is, uh, advance, uh, the use of one or more city-owned parcels for affordable housing. I think we can wrap that into the conversation we just had. And I'll work with councilmember Hardy and councilmember Hall on, um, that initiative. There was also a concept in our, uh, presented, uh, to, uh, if pending, pending funding, uh, hire a housing or and or economic development focused person to help advance some of these initiatives. And, uh, and there is high and medium support for that as well. If, if the budget, uh, was able to support that.
Okay. So if not seeing any comments related to that, so I think we're all in consensus here.
And, uh, this, this, uh, next question, uh, we did ask the question if, you know, given the challenges, uh, for us in meeting these Rena numbers, uh, as well as business recovery efforts, if, if there were dollars available, uh, rate your level of interest in enhancing funding. And clearly there is, uh, a lot of support for that, should the, the budget numbers materialize. So I think we can wrap that back into the same conversation and move to goal three.
Very good. And I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I touch back on when the, the item of, uh, uh, hiring a housing, uh, and development person, uh, looking at, at a potential, but also can we find synergy with somebody who's also working with one of the other municipalities or agencies? So we might not be able to afford the full ticket ourselves, but maybe there's a way to, to, to share, uh, expenses on something like that.
Sure. Okay. So, uh, this is a, a broad goal. Uh, there's a comment about, uh, uh, there are no goals listed here related to regional collaboration. And I think that probably dates back to when, uh, this was contemplated. There was a, an initial, uh, thought a couple of years ago to start a conversation with neighbors up and down the valley and in, uh, supportive of a number of, um, climate and social related initiatives. And, and that's matured in some ways into a regional climate action committee that, uh, our mayor and councilmember Ch- Chateau are a part of, uh, that's happening. And, and of course, we have worked with our adjacent neighbors, uh, in support of a number of initiatives over, uh, recent years. Uh, there's a lot of support for the items on rows three through seven. I'm happy to, uh, answer questions about any of that, uh, if you have them. And then there was, uh, in terms of row eight, this was, uh, a reference to just working on the Parks and Rec and ATSC language that speaks to how we, um, essentially their individual constitutions. The ATSC, uh, both, both groups have established subcommittees and we are anticipating receiving some recommendations from them that might lead to either adoption of a resolution outlining the focus of AT, ATSC and ref- refining that. And then in the case of the Parks and Rec Commission, this would be potential adjustments to the municipal code. It, uh, essentially updates the, the guidance that's provided there today. And, uh, let me pause, uh, on that, uh, and note that the, the, there are two bulleted items under excellent explanations related to consideration of pausing, uh, a couple of these.
Do we have any council comments here? I'm seeing no hands up. I've got a few comments. I just wanted to, um, comment here, looking at, uh, our, uh, discussions on social justice, diversity and inclusion, I think is very critical. We continue, uh, these, these really came forward during numerous other emergencies, making it clear, uh, to me that whatever we're doing, uh, that's a really, uh, critical part of, 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 of equitable living, uh, in Napa County. So I think that's important, uh, to continue, um, and, uh, looking at, um, what was the other? Sorry, I'm just, um, on parks, you know, it's a, it's a challenging thing. Um, but parks are an amenity that serves not just locals, but also people who visit. And, and I want to, you know, recognize, you know, I, I can remember spending time in the town of Ashland, Oregon, a small town in southern Oregon, and the parks, um, are, are part of the draw and part of the, um, the experience for people both living there and folks who visit. So I think there's a, uh, importance in, in maintaining a level of attractiveness and welcomingness in our parks. So that's, those are just some comments I have. And I, did I see, uh, councilmember Hall with a hand? Oh, okay. Uh, and then I'm, I am seeing this note down here about regional collaboration. And, and I do, uh, support, really support that because, you know, we are an organ in the larger body of the county and the region, and communication is always really important. Um, so I do, I do think a sort of a, uh, holistic, uh, weaving of that, uh, concept in is important as well.
Okay. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. Um, with regard to the mayor's last comment there, I, I concur. I, I don't see how we're going to solve a lot of our problems without regional collaboration. I just think it's part of the way we get our work done. And maybe that's all we need to recognize and, and, uh, accept moving forward, that all of us are gonna work on whatever resources we need to draw on and keep, uh, relationships healthy and productive, uh, up and down the, the valley to help solve our city's problems. I mean, that's basically what we're doing.
And I support the idea.
I don't know if we need a, a whole separate bullet on regional collaboration. I think that's just part of the way we work and get our job done here.
I, I do think there's a value to memorializing it somewhere, um, uh, so that as folks look at what we do, it doesn't slip off the radar. Uh, but, but, uh, I do think it, I concur. It's critical. Councilmember Hardy?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Ellsworth. Uh, I, I, I do think that it is important where we, uh, identify a goal, like regional collaboration, to have some, uh, way of measuring progress. So in that regard, um, uh, perhaps the city manager can think of, uh, or perhaps we can suggest, uh, to the city manager, not now, but over time, uh, some concrete steps that could be taken to improve, um, or expand, uh, our participation with other local agencies so that we do have tasks against which progress on this goal can be measured. Otherwise, uh, it, it just remains, uh, I think a bit too, um, too vague for us to know where we are.
Thank you.
Okay.
That, that may be, yes, something to consider how we, how we measure, uh, so that, that we can see progress or how we operate.
Okay.
And I'm sure Presswitch, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, I, I didn't want to lose sight of the fact that our housing element is going to be, you know, a multi-year, uh, really significant work effort at the planning department. And it will envelop some of the goal two. So before we leave the topic of housing, I just wanted to find out if we wanted to, you know, add that as a line item because it, it will be something that we're obviously, as you know, starting progress on even this month.
Did you refer to the housing element?
Yes, yes, related to the housing element, because that's going to be a multi-year project and, and a significant staff effort.
Right. So it's, uh, we do have under goal two, line five, advanced work on general plan housing element update. And that is a little vague and it, I think it was drafted slightly vague because it recognized that that was more than a 12-month initiative. Um, but perhaps we can also refine that a little bit more.
Okay. Okay. That's right. It is on there. I think we had updated it from before. It was just the RFP. Okay. Okay, that's right. It is on there. I think we had updated it from before. It was just the RFP. So thank you.
And then moving to the new items considered for goal three, we have four items here.
I'm saying Vice Mayor Doring's hand.
I'm sorry.
Just before we leave that last topic, I wanted to, on the regional collaboration, how we just put these three thoughts in your mind. I think there are opportunities in law enforcement, code enforcement, and water supply.
Yes, thank you. Those are, those, I think I recognize that and support that.
Thank you. Okay, so we do have four items that were or responses that suggested other considered items. And we have some feedback on those related to working with Calistoga on code enforcement, new project initiation and process citywide, or new project initiation and approval, citywide customer service scoring, which a lot of different ways we can do that. And then refresh city website from outside in and reference to the chamber. And I think this feedback is related to the city's own website, which is, is in need of a, a refresh, most likely, but has been set aside due to competing challenges. And the same, and the chamber has its own website that they manage, a terrific website, St. Helena dot com.
And so on the, the initial, Vice Mayor Doring, is your hand up? No, okay. So in our study from, I believe it was last year, looking also the conversations with the Calistoga Police Department, working with shared resources on that front. And then also, we've talked about it with code enforcement. So those are two aspects there. And then the, on the, on the website. So yeah, that, I was a little confused with that. We're talking about two different websites or web presence as one is the chamber and then the other is the city. And there's some, so sorry, there's some linkage between, but it's too different. Then that's, I guess, the clarity.
I, I think there's room for improvement for our website and also integration of mobile devices, both for customer service reporting, you know, initiated requests that can be moved to a, a mobile device where most of us can communicate more than a desktop computer. But there's certainly room for and over, you know, a refresh. I think there's, you know, that generally has some, it, it requires a time commitment. I did go through a city website refresh about four years ago. And it does, it does take time to plan those out and to work with a consultant to help us, but it, it may be something that is good to keep track of, but perhaps consider as a medium item or a subsequent year item. But there's, I think there's, when, when you have a beautiful community like ours, use of pictures and photography, visual representation, and, and simplifying the look and feel of the website can be very helpful. But I would, I think all of these, the way that the feedback is showing up here, I'm, I think when we see this again, we will characterize these unless you provide feedback. Otherwise, we would characterize these concept, we will capture them, use them as yellow for now. And then we can further refine that. Is that okay?
I, I, I think so. And I think that, you know, what we've really learned working together, we've built a culture really focusing on staff retention and wanting our team to be here and our council engaged. And so I think as, as you, as you, if we keep these on the radar, but we have a trust of staff to recognize when some of these that may not be high priority can be slipped into, into the work plan, or they can see a spot. But, but that's where our staff can, can use their recognition of their own capacity on some of these items that may not be at the top priority.
Yeah. The, the one item that might be the exception there is the code enforcement item. It's not necessarily the hardest lift. And we've had prior conversations, as you may recall with the city and county of Napa about seeking similar arrangements that, that was never materialized, but it's a fairly easy thing for us to follow up on. So that one is maybe something that with two high priorities and two medium priorities can be considered for our work plan.
Yeah, that is, that's been made clear by the community that that's a, that's an important aspect. So looking at that, you know, in a way that we can move it forward.
Okay. And then as we look to the yellow, red items, we just have, there's a ref, there is a reference to code enforcement, which I think we just covered. And then documenting the scale of two existing non-conforming businesses, we're actually doing that right now with Center Home. And that, there's a, a lot of work involved in that and requires probably several weeks of work, just digging through decades of files and, and documenting that. So these are heavy lifts and this would be the second of our larger businesses with a lot of history that we're working on right now. So that is, one of those is in motion right now. But perhaps they can stay as a medium type priority as, as time permits, we can get to those items. And then there's a few comments here.
One of my thoughts with that was that, that because we can't get to too much of that, keeping it at a limited number. But again, the, part of our legacy issues, we want to keep on the radar so we get everybody up to date. And it's, it can be done concurrently with other things, but looked at by staff as where they can prioritize. So I think that, that number of two keeps it within a range of the expectations are not over, overburdening. Any, any comment here from council? And so I see the, the comments there. So those can be woven in, Mr. Presswich, and, and perhaps clarified how this, something like this occurs.
Okay. Okay. So now we're transitioning to the economic sustainability related goal, ensure long-term economic sustainability while safeguarding St. Helena's unique culture and quality of life. A lot of consensus here. I'll just pause and ask if there are any comments on any of these initiatives. The, the item eight, row eight here on the general plan items are, when we adopted the general plan, we also, I also asked our Parks and Rec director to begin working with the Parks and Rec Commission to look at the variety of initiatives and help us prioritize what is the low hanging fruit that can get done sooner and what are the longer term items that were identified in the general plans. That's what that relates to.
Any council comments here? My one thought on the number seven, the intervene to assist and secure tenants for vacant buildings, I think that's important. You know, St. Helena is not the only town dealing with this issue, many, many towns. And if there's ways, because we're smaller and nimble, to look at how we interact with our, our building owners and can incentivize, et cetera, work with to try to fill spaces that bring good things to the town. So I, I think that's an important one. That is the front-facing part of our, our town to, to the world. And so I think important.
I had a reservation, I had a reservation about that because I don't know what the word intervene means. It's a real, it's rather vague in my mind, amorphous, and then therefore hard to really measure.
So I, 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 I have the same, same thought as the Vice Mayor. I, I didn't understand exactly what that meant. Knowing that, you know, landlords have a lot of leeway to do what they need to do to solve some of their own financial issues, but I, I like the idea of figuring out a way to, to work with landlords. We, we don't have that many in the commercial downtown core. And maybe there's some way we can think about how to, you know, you don't want to start talking about incentivizing one, one landlord versus another, but we've got to get the conversation opened on how do we get our, our downtown recovered? And if it's a mission of our city to do it, then we'd like everybody to, to join us in that mission. So somehow we need to get that conversation going with, with each landlord one at a time.
And perhaps recrafting that language as both, as both you and Councilmember Hall and Vice Mayor Doring suggested, it may be a language issue of how we, we put that down.
Yeah. Yeah. And there, this sort of relates to a couple of the comments on the new, you know, the ideas here that are similar, develop a measurable business recovery program for the downtown core, have a working down, a downtown working group with staff support in partnership with the chamber. And I, and I'm imagining that, I think some of the, the phrase intervene related to, let's think of some businesses that may be nearby, interested in expanding and helping to reach out to talk about the number of visitors to town, some of the Democrat, the attributes of St. Helena that might be attractive for, for a new retailer to consider expanding to St. Helena or creating a business in St. Helena. If we put together some metrics that document the, the, the fact that we're one of the highest sales tax per capita sales tax cities in Napa and Sonoma, we were number one in, in 2017 when I arrived. It's an example. Yes, Eric.
Councilmember Hall?
Mark, I, I like all of those ideas. And I, I, I think just, just for transparency sake, I was the guy talking about maybe refreshing our website. I, I think the chamber has done a terrific job with theirs. And part of my comment regarding the chamber is here's one of our, our closest and best partners, and they're doing a bang up job. And, and look at our website. Why aren't they helping us? And to, to your point, I'm not sure it's the city's position to lease commercial space, but we can certainly, again, reiterate on the city website as a priority about getting our businesses going, that whole list of things that you just talked about. What are we doing to incentivize business to come to town, to talk about our, you know, lightening our tax base somehow, reducing our fees somehow? So outside investors can see it right on the front page of the city of St. Helena website. And if they want to dig into the chamber deeply, they can. If they want to connect with brokers, they can. But I think city policy that's incentivizing and motivating people to come here, something we probably need right there on our homepage. And I think our website could use a little bit more leaning into the marketing side of things to get our city back up on its feet again. Similarly, I think all of the effort that our community is putting into the focus on water, why don't we, you know, back to Vice Mayor Doring's comments the other night about, you know, isn't there some way we can really rally the entire community around, you know, whether it's a, it's a thermometer dial or something like that, but some way of talking about, here's what we're doing about our water and how to keep hammering away on these, these very, very critical initiatives. And none of that is, is necessarily jumping off of our, our homepage at all on our website. So there's a lot of work that we are all putting into these initiatives here, and we all talk about them mostly in closed session. And the rest of the world hears bits and pieces, but where we're clear on what we're doing on three or four of these major items, I'd love to see that present on the city's own website and updated regularly. That's just my.
Thank you for those comments. I've seen Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you, Mayor Ellsworth. Just wanted to say with respect to the subject of tenants and vacant buildings, I come at it through a somewhat different lens. I, I, I see this community and its main street like many others. In a moment of transition, the digital world has transformed retail business and is continuing to change it. And, and I read repeatedly that the pandemic has actually accelerated a lot of these changes. So I think one thing the city can do that isn't, you know, intervening in a landlord tenant relationship, but maybe very important and helpful is to think about what kinds of businesses are not only fit our community, but also are well adapted to the future, to the present and future of retail in a market like this, so that we can be recruiting the right kind of business for St. Helena and, and for St. Helena's future. And, and that's, I, I think there's a lot of potential upside to that kind of effort. And, and then if we're doing that and there are businesses that are excited about coming here, then I think the landlord tenant part is likely, to some extent, to work itself out without any intervention. But that's my thought.
And I think, and I'll circle back in just a moment, Councilmember Hall, I think that in, in that sort of effort to reach out, be proactive, tying into Councilmember Hall's comments about using the city website as a, as a portal in that respect as well. So there may be some synergy in, in how we, we look at that. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Hardy's comments. I, I, I completely concur, Lester. I think I, I also view much of the recovery of the downtown as what's happened as a result through COVID as you know, we, each of us here might have ideas about a type of business that we might want to see downtown. I think that's great. I, I also am, am very, very sensitive to the fact that there's an entire community around us that also has lots of ideas coming at them in many different ways, things that this body just simply collectively, we're not going to have the time or the effort to, to get to. So I kind of view it as the challenge downtown is how, how do we, we make our zoning and use agreements flexible enough and dynamic enough and loose enough to allow for all kinds of ideas. So we take a, what may have been a very restrained concrete description of life in the past here, and we figure out a way to open that up. So landlords and tenants and brokers and families can start thinking differently about how does life recover downtown? And then somehow, working with the Planning Commission, we, through this zoning update, we figure out is there anything in this description that we view collectively as a community as too far outside, you know, outside the bounds of what we are comfortable with? I, I think that might be part of it. How do we allow space today for all kinds of new ideas? But we provide some sort of border out here that says, as a community, we just simply won't, won't accept these, these things. I don't know what that is or how we walk through that process. But I know the zoning update process is going to be quite extensive. And that would be one way I, I think about motivating people to come here.
I think those are excellent thoughts. My, my thought is that there are, in terms of looking at what potential boundaries exist in terms of road capacity, water capacity. So as we look at how we can innovate and be creative and, but keeping in mind what, what are our resources and how we, how we, how we balance all that. And I concur that that, the zoning update is going to give us a pathway that's, that's going to allow us to evolve in ways that we haven't in the past.
Mr. Mayor, would you say that we need to be cognizant of our time? And I would, I will, do want to have a conversation about the intent on the community budget survey. And I know we have one more item. I don't want to leave that one unsaid because we're doing a lot of talking, but I'd like to hear back from our community at some point. So.
Okay, very good. Yeah, that was my next item to bring up is we're going to be getting into community input. I'm going to just check in with Mr. Presswich, you know, if, as we look through, moving through today, if we have to leave off, what are your suggestions in terms of how we do that?
Yeah, I think we can wrap up fairly quickly on, on this. If I can ref, refine just a quick thing to close up goal four. And I think all five and six can be five minutes each or less. The CIP list is largely supported by everyone. There are a couple There are a couple of items on, you know, there's one item on goal eight, other, the other that I would ask some feedback on. And then move to the final. And then we'll need to take some public comment on on this item on the agenda before we move to the budget survey.
Okay, so very good.
So with with goal four, there were, I think, the comments on the intervening and with Councilmember Hall and Councilmember Hardy, we can work together to capture the ideas presented under the new ideas here, the downtown working group, business recovery. It seems to all fall into the same item. I think we can work together, bringing you back the full council back some ideas there. And then when we look at the yellow and red for for goal four, there are two items that stand out on your feedback, and it relates to presenting options for increasing city revenue for city council consideration. We touched on that a little bit earlier. And the second is developing a finance financing and revenue strategy to address city infrastructure. Very similar items. And I think with five high priority responses, this is something that we'll weave back into the work plan. And is that fair to to say? And we can
Yes.
And we can consider the other items here as as medium ideas.
We're seeing thumbs up on that concept.
Okay. And then when we transition to goal five, this is the youth and families initiative, support thriving families and enhance the safety, well being and healthy development of our families. We had a council ad hoc committee in partnership with staff develop a list of ideas here. And and the overall consensus is that these are are these look good. There may be some terminology related to every other month that might be easier to follow in terms of the reference to bi monthly. And there are, we do have some comments in the final tab today that captured some additional comments that are general in nature, but do maybe speak to some of this. So with goal five, the only additional new idea idea presented was the idea of developing a youth and families master plan to increase accountability, collaboration, and better coordination of services. And perhaps that can come out of some of the initiatives, some of the initial efforts to organize and connect to our youth in particular.
I I would just like to jump in with a comment on this, and I'll circle back to you, Vice Mayor, just a moment. I just want to say thank you to the subcommittee that put this together. I believe it was Vice Mayor Doring and Councilmember Chateau. This is really wonderful work. And I just want to say thank you for the focus and effort on it. So I will defer now to Vice Mayor Doring.
Yeah, in that regard, I agree with you. But Priya Nixon deserves all of the credit and did most of the heavy lifting on on bringing these ideas forward. With respect to the youth and families master plan, I recognize that that is probably not everybody's priority, but it's been my priority every year since 2015, when I started on the council. And so my point there is it may not get done this year, but I don't want to, I don't want it to lose its importance. It's important to me. It's a bigger item. It probably wouldn't get done in a year, but it's something that's extremely critical. And I just want to keep it on the radar. And I'll keep it on the radar every year until we have some energy around it.
If if we look at our, you know, our housing strategy, and we have a water strategy, and if we have a youth goals strategy that, as you're as you're pointing out with a master plan, I think we can get control of something like this, that's it's just, it's just remarkable. So again, my thank you to to both of the council members and to and to Priya Nixon for for this. I just was blown away seeing the effort and the the comprehensive approach here. So very, I think, serves our community deeply.
Thank you. Moving to goal six, we have, this is a support initiatives that respond to and plan for climate change. We have a climate action chapter in the general plan, and there's been some work on already on prioritizing the initiatives coming out of that. We've talked about a pest management policy, the Redwood Forest. Those are ideas that are in 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 motion from a work standpoint. And then we've, the council has recently issued a joint statement with Water Out at California, which relates to the sixth, the row six item here. And then there is a JPA that's going to be coming to the city council soon related to a county, the countywide climate action committee. And this would be a next step at formalizing some of the work that's happening regionally. So the only additional comment received here relates to developing a strategy to look at every decision to make that we make to see if there's a climate impact. And a reference to that every dollar we spend has a climate association. So there are perhaps even ways that we can include some information on our on our staff reports that that helps to address additional environmental considerations beyond CEQA.
I'm seeing Councilmember Chateau.
Thank you. Just real quick, the JPA that we're talking about isn't a joint powers authority. It's a joint powers agreement. So that has less structure and funding that was more a middle way. So I just wanted to bring up that distinction.
Thank you.
My my thought here is, thank you. My thought here is that climate, as we look at similarly to emergency preparedness, with this concept of it being woven into everything we do, knowing that we have a resolution recognizing 2030 is the year we are aiming to for for carbon drawdown. So it's not that far away. So it needs to be part of our calculus. And I think we can still be innovative, creative, et cetera. But but I support the idea that that's part of what we calculate into our decision making. And I'm seeing our Vice Mayor Doring with his hand up.
Yeah, just, I know we're short on time. Just I want to follow up on the comment by Mr. Presswich. I do think it is is a good idea to try to connect our goals to our budget items. A couple of years ago, I advanced that idea with our NVTA board. And now it's it's accepted policy when they prepare their agenda. They will go through at the end and name, actually name the goal that's being advanced. It sometimes it could be several goals. Sometimes it doesn't fall into the, you know, to a policy very clearly. But I think that would be a good exercise for us to be able to, when we when we have agenda items, to have a place in that agenda item that says this goal is being met by this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. I think there are some structural changes we can make to that.
I would support that as well. And I think that's brought some clarity, certainly on the NVTA. So thank you for that.
Okay, we'll transition now to overview of our CIP projects. Most of these projects are at least 50% complete. There are a couple of exceptions to that. But the only two items that received a consideration of pausing advancement were the sulfur creek sediment removal and the library roof replacement project. The library roof does need to eventually be replaced. It it's going to be a matter of dollars. And so that item can come back, I think, in the context of the budget conversations that emerge. And there are a few comments here. And in terms of other ideas, there we've inventoried some work that would happen if the city interim city hall transitions to Napa Valley College. That will be a fairly significant lift over a six month period to transition city hall and police services to that a portion of that campus. And then I don't want to overlook the survey that you took overlooked this. So this was Vice Mayor Doring reminded me that the council had received a presentation last year, and we have an ad hoc, I'm sorry, we have a a subcommittee of our Parks and Recreation Committee that's working on trail and open space initiatives. And some exciting ideas there that not only help trails, but also have a economic connection. And then the the one curiosity, I think, on goal eight relates to the city hall replacement and next steps. And perhaps that's that's a longer conversation, and we can revisit that a little bit later. But under the CIP, are there any comments or feedback that you have on these items now?
I have a comment on, I'm seeing, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hardy, I'm seeing your hand now.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Ellsworth. Mark, where is the sediment removal project that's referred to in that line item?
This is the Harold Smith and Sons, you know, in that vicinity. Erica can can provide some context here. But in short, the city did some work east, west of the bridge last year before the rainy season. And there's a need to do some additional work south or east of the bridge on their in in an area where they previously had the ability to to essentially dredge. And there is some help that we were work, we were working in partnership with Harold Smith to work on permitting this project, this work. So Erica, is there anything else you'd like to add to that?
No, unless you wanted to provide information that that the flood control district, they were trying to assist as well and did some cross sections two years ago with Napa County RCD. But it kind of stalled out. It's private property. They had a, the Health and Son had had a dredging agreement with California Fish and Wildlife. It lapsed. And then they reached out to the city, I think in 2017, right during construction season, to see if we could help them get permits. There is no time to get permits. As everyone else should be known now, it's difficult to get permits overnight when it comes to regulatory agencies. And now you know, the county does, the county flood control and water conservation district does assist private landowners with their facilities and maintaining their own creeks. So there's not a choice for Health Smith to either take this on directly, or the city continue to assist Health Smith and Sons with their permitting aspect of this. But the the city staff did do internally. We worked with the county flood control district and were able to under the countywide JPA permit do some some work under Valley View and clean out the sediment buildup around the bridge abutments. And then it'll probably need to be done, maybe not if we don't get enough rain, but do again this fall with the it depending on how much seven has built up again around the bridge.
Thank you. With that information in mind, I have learned over the course of the last year that some time back, and I can't put a year on this, as a private initiative funded by a local nonprofit, modeling of the of Sulfur Creek was done. And and my understanding is that the modeling included a way of calculating the amount of gravel that needs to be removed on average every year, just based on the the morphology of the stream and its gravel depositing characteristics. And if that removal isn't kept up at a rate that approximately, you know, equals the rate in which new gravel is put down, then gradually over time, our flood risk increases. So I'll follow up with Ms. Smithies and and our city manager as soon as I have a chance. But I think making sure that staff has access to the modeling that's already been done. And and that, you know, everyone is on council in the community is informed that that, you know, this is something that we actually need to address as a flood protection matter. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm seeing Councilmember Hall, are you? No, okay. I I support that as well. This is a problem that builds and comes up and has been mentioned to me. You know, in terms of keeping an eye on this, and that that may be that cross jurisdictional dialogue, a real opportunity as well. So I'm supportive of of looking at this. And then one, one other item on this, I won't belabor the the point. But as we look at upgrading all of our systems, I want to, you know, just keep on the radar that I think we have to look at our our waste management as well as, you know, wastewater, water. It's it's part of a comprehensive look at our city. So I just want to put that there and see if there are any other comments on this section. And I'm not seeing any. So we can, Mr. Presswich, move to our next section here.
So just two more tabs. One is another category that captures a couple of other items that we can probably move to other under other goals. This is just a catch all, but the transition to the Napa Valley College should that as that moves forward, the trails and the city hall replacement. Perhaps the city hall replacement, there there are three continue continue to support that one moving forward. And one consideration of pausing that. Any comments on these items? And and two comments on some other goals here.
My comment on city hall is, my thought is putting energy and focus on the move to the the college is certainly priority. And if, as we move forward, then, you know, perhaps it's a little more on the back burner. But we want to make sure that we're being proactive. If we have a contract length with the college, what what are our thoughts for afterwards? But that may not be right now, I think the front burner is getting that the initial move made. Any council comment here? Okay.
So I see that also the reference to the waste and refuse management mayor that you mentioned, and then the water supply, alternative water supplies is probably something that also, it is something that would fall under the prior water conversation that we've had. So with the Priya on the other comment, I'm sorry, under the other items, I think we'll move the city hall to yellow, orange for for purposes of the next conversation. And then we did receive some general comments that relate to the work plan. Infrastructure and business recovery in particular. And then there's a section, second comment as well. These are a little bit harder to read, so we'll have to zoom in on it. And if if any of the council members would like to comment on that, we will do that. And then, Mayor, we can turn to public comment.
Okay, very good. Any council comments on this section? Seeing none, we can go now to public comment. I want to recognize that we have at least one letter that was submitted, and I believe it was regarding campaign issues.
Mr. Presswich, could you maybe after this meeting, send those comments to us? So that we have a chance to to absorb them? Some of the ones that we don't have time to really explore now, that would be helpful for me.
Sure.
This last item here. Thank you.
So so with that, I'm gonna, oh, I'm seeing Councilmember Chateau.
Yes, I do. I I read that letter about the, there's been several comments about us looking at how we have a mayor and having it come from the council. So I'm supportive of looking at that in the next year. It would be something that we would have to do a lot of planning for. And it would be a valid initiative. It wouldn't be up to us. So I would support looking at that. And also the Star editorial board talked about it. It's come, it keeps coming up.
Yeah, I'm certainly supportive of that. And and I think it's the idea of a package of of our our campaign candidate elected issues. One of the other issues I think that ties in is that the the council stipend might want to get looked at in that package. We want to make sure that our council is supported in a way that we can have equitable representation throughout the county, the council for the community. So I think a a look at a a campaign and governance package, how we might move forward and evolve that as well. I'm certainly supportive of of all aspects of looking at that. Councilmember Hardy?
Thank you, Mayor Ellsworth. I just want to say that with respect to things that need to be or that we wish to be to see placed on a ballot, then the election calendar is really the key thing to have in mind. And in terms of you know, what we need to do by the date that's required in order to get a measure on any particular ballot, we don't have that many options. And if if we can't schedule things in a way that gets on a on a ballot that's at an election that's already scheduled, then we end up absorbing the cost of a special election. So I think just on that subject alone, what the subject alone, what the election calendar looks like and what the deadlines would be, a, a kind of preliminary report from staff might be invaluable in terms of helping the council figure out what our work plan is with respect to that subject. Thank you.
Yes, I think that walking the timeline and, and, you know, seeing where things lay out will tell us how we, and when we need to start, where, et cetera. So so with that, I'm going to open the public comment and see if we have anybody that's called in. And I will go to Ms. Jeffopoulos and see if we have anybody with a raised hand.
There are no raised hands.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. If there are no, if, if there are any other thoughts on this item, now is time to speak up or we will move to the other item. I'm seeing no hands up. So we'll now move down to our item 5.6. This is consideration of community budget survey.
Thank you, Mayor. A number of, a number of cities as a form of public engagement in preparation for a budget development process, seek community feedback on a variety of initiatives. And, and I've worked with the mayor and the vice mayor to develop a draft community budget survey that would be translated into Spanish should it move forward. We would also deliver that digitally as well as in paper. This is, the information that's received would allow the city council to be sure that the budget that we're crafting reflects the community's thinking on a variety of fronts. We have developed a, a short budget survey, and most of the surveys I've looked at in different cities, they're, they come in all shapes and sizes. It's fair to say that. There are some general, general consistencies between these cities. Typically, there's an optional demographics section that would come at the end of the survey. And a number of questions about services that are provided by the general fund in particular. So we have a, a draft that we can share with you today. We don't have a lot of time left today, so perhaps this is something that is better. It is possible to do, for us to move this forward and, and, and launch it now with the idea that some feedback could be presented to you by the meeting of the 25th. But we're also thinking about this as a longer term engagement that allows for us to capture information that would be then incorporated into the, into the budget development process that will be moving forward from now through June. So we do have some budget workshops planned for May. We would have a lot of time between now and May to, to capture the information and, and report out on it. And if there's, if there's interest in time, we can quickly show you what that looks like.
I, I certainly would like to see what, what's been put up there so far and see if there's any council comment on how to, if there's, if there's things we need to look at or add.
Okay, we're prepared to share a screen. So we're going, if that's okay. We will do this quickly, but this is, we're in the design survey mode. So this is not what the actual survey will look like to the user, but this is how we build it. So there's an introductory page and then we move into that thanks people for taking the, the survey. Typically, it's helpful to start surveys with a very easy enticing question that gets them connected. And, and once we get their commitment, they, they stay the course. And we've also designed this survey to be less than 10 minutes with the idea that we will have more participation if we keep it relatively short. So this question's about how long you've lived in, in the community. And then we move into rating various aspects of quality of life in St. Helena. Just interesting to get feedback on what our community's thinking is on St. Helena as a place to live, raise children, or visit, retire, overall quality of life. This is something that you often see and you will always see in a community survey, not necessarily a budget survey. And I distinguish between those two different types of surveys. So this is not something that is always in a budget survey, but I think it's interesting and easy data to capture that might be helpful for us to receive feedback on. The, the next question relates to rating a variety of characteristics as they relate to St. Helena as a whole. So this does touch on a number of services that we provide or can enhance. And so this ranges from feeling safe in St. Helena, the overall economic health, sense of community, overall image and reputation, the appearance of our city, the appearance of Main Street in particular, the quality of life, the quality of city services. Now, in a community survey, we would drill down on every department. That's a distinguishing characteristic here. So we would be generalizing with this question. The availability of paths and walking trails, the ease of walking, the ease of travel by car, the ease of travel by bicycle, ease of travel by public transportation, opportunities to participate in social events and activities, openness and acceptance of the community towards people of diverse backgrounds, the neighborliness of St. Helena residents, and then a couple of questions about housing affordability and availability. And then we really close with a, a statement about the impacts of COVID, recognizing that we're this past year and this coming year, we have revenue constraints. And so this question starts with just an acknowledgement that the COVID pandemic has had some impact on city finances. And this asks feedback about various city service levels, the services and investments that typically you see a general fund of a city support. So we're looking for feedback from important to less important. And these questions relate to business assistance and supporting economic vitality, fire protection, maintaining a low crime rate, providing recreation programs for youth seniors and residents, ensuring a clean and well-maintained park and parks facilities, parks and park facilities, providing access to the library and library services, maintaining a strong budget reserve, maintaining and repairing streets, which means potholes, paving, et cetera, maintaining and repairing public buildings, sponsoring community events and festivals for families, prompt graffiti removal services, something that we do, providing pay, private, paying down the city's unfunded liabilities, investing in efforts to address climate initiatives, providing affordable housing, providing arts and cultural programs, making improvements for bicycle riders, keeping St. Helena streets clean, preparing for natural disasters and emergencies, traffic enforcement, expanding the system of recreational trails, responding to citizen calls for police assistance, and preservation of natural areas such as open space and farmlands. We, we close with, I'm sorry, three additional, two, two questions that invite up to three responses. What do you, what do you think are the three most important issues facing the community in the coming year? These are open ended. But we would aggregate the responses into themes that we see. And what are your three, if you had three recommendations to improve the quality of life on, in St. Helena or city services, what would those be? And Priya, we can continue. Then we get into some demographic questions about age, ethnicity, income and gender. So that's our survey, and we can revisit questions that you have, any feedback or, or curiosity about.
In, in your thought, this is ready to go out to the public. Is that my understanding?
It's, it's ready to go out. We need to translate and put a translated version in place. We would need to print, develop some print copies and develop a, a deadline for responses so that we can use that as a, a date that motivates people to respond by a certain date. So there's a little more thinking that needs to go into the survey. And if there's council interest in, in adjusting, you know, these questions, it would be helpful to work with either continue to work with the mayor and the vice mayor who assisted me in putting this together. Any, any feedback on questions can be shared with me directly and we can work together to update that as necessary. And, and that's essentially, you know, I, I think that something like this could be very helpful for us as we move through the budget process.
Very good. Did I, I think I saw Councilmember Chateau with a hand up. So if you, oh, I'm seeing Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mark, and Mayor and Vice Mayor for putting that together. One quick question. It sounds like you're about ready to go. We have short, short time to gather the data. What, what date were you thinking about distributing it?
It depended on, it depended on today's conversation a little bit.
Okay.
You know, if there's, if there's interest in massaging the questions, then I, I think that we would be able to, to launch it before the next meeting, but we would only be able to give you early feedback on, on data. And perhaps it's better presented at some point in the budget development process. If you're interested in data by the 25th, even if it's preliminary trends, the, the focus would be on trying to get this out by next week, end of next week.
Okay. And, and then I guess the issue is how does it get distributed in a way everywhere?
We would use all of our, we have a checklist that we've developed on outreach. So it would go out through eNews. We, we have a, we have another newsletter that's going to be prepared by mid-month. It might align well with that. And we, we would use every social media channel that we have. And then we do anticipate presenting paper copies, for example, to Vineyard Valley and other locations around town and receiving feedback. There would be some data entry required of us for any, any surveys that are done by paper. We would also, you know, finish translate, we haven't, I don't think we finished the translation of survey, but we've started. And so we can amend. If there are adjustments, it wouldn't be too difficult to adjust that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And I'm seeing Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you, Mayor Ellsworth. I, I just wanted to say, I, I, I think this is probably a place where we don't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good. Getting timely feedback seems to me an appropriate priority, and I think the question is good enough.
Thank you. Do we have consensus on that? Does the council want to take a few days or the weekend to look it over to see if we're skipping anything? Or do people feel good about where it is now? With a thumb up or we're feeling comfortable with it? Okay, I'm seeing nods. So that looks like we're seeing the thumbs up. We've got consensus. So
Down question, Jeff, so we weren't sure how to answer it. I'll object. I'm good with it as it is right now to go out right now.
Okay, okay. Sorry if I phrase that incorrectly or in a unclear way. I'm supportive as well. And did I see at least one other thumbs up? I think I did. So we're, I think, Mark, you can feel comfortable that it's at a good spot to, to go out as, as and when, as soon as you can get it rolling.
Great. And it would be appropriate to, to receive public comment on this particular item because of the direction.
Okay. We'll do. So I will open it for public comment and see if we have a hand, any hands up?
There is no public comment.
Okay, I'll bring it back. A close public comment. I just want to say that I think this is a, a great tool to engage with the community and bring in feedback. I also think that this, this process with this survey going out to the council members gives everybody time to, to think and reflect and put information forward. So I like this process where we survey the council on one side and then the community on the other, and we bring that information together. So want to thank the Vice Mayor for pushing forward on that community engagement aspect and city manager for this concept with the survey on the, on the goals. So with that, I think we're at the end of our meeting. And if there's no additional comment or input, I want to just once again circle back and say, what a remarkable year, incredible work by the council, incredible work by the staff, incredible focus and work by the community to all stick together and get to where we are now. And then want to look forward to another great year, a remarkable year, no matter what the hurdles, all working together. And it's very, very much appreciated. So we will adjourn and see you at the next meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Cindy, do you need me to stay on?
No, I don't think so. I just, I stopped the recording.